All right, so I'm gonna call the school committee meeting to order. It's Wednesday, April 25th, 2018. Let's do the pledge allegiance first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll do a quick rundown of the agenda. First, we will approve our minutes from our regular session on April 11th. Then we will do our superintendent report, our assistant superintendent report, director of finance administration reports, and then our school committee member reports. Then we'll have citizens' requests. Then we'll be looking at a request for an approval of a field trip to England in April 2019. And we will get an update from Chartwell's Food Service. Then our town moderator will be joining us for debriefing after the annual town meeting. Then we will get a program review update on our health and wellness program. And then another review, program review update for our foreign language and science and math programs. Then we will have an annual security procedure update with our school safety officer and our new chief of police. And then we do have a need for an executive session this evening, and then we'll, we return for bills. So, they're on the agenda. So Amber, that turns it over to you.
All right, thank you very much. Welcome back to everybody. We had vacation week last week.
Oh, you want to do the minutes first or go for it? Yeah, sorry, I forgot.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, the regular session minutes from April 11th, 2018.
Second.
I'd like to make a motion to approve amended minutes.
Is it amended?
Yes.
Yes, it is, I'm sorry. It's amended minutes. My bad. Still a second.
Motion for amended minute and a second. Any further discussion on that? All in favor? Thank you. Amber.
Back to me. No, that's good, thank you. Welcome back, everybody. I have a couple updates. I'll start with the fact that vacation week, I was super glad that during the ice, I didn't have to think about calling school. And then no one was gonna pester me about concerns that there was a safety issue, I needed a delay. So the highlight for me was that the ice and snow that we experienced, I did, I did not have to think about calling delays. And I believe that we officially are on the other side, I'm gonna say, in that we've called the days we're gonna call. So I'm hoping spring is officially here. During vacation week, we had several trips. Are you gonna highlight trips, Emily?
Oh, I was gonna mention it.
You got a couple, all right. I'll talk about the one I went on, then just my own personal opportunity, and you can do the others. I had a wonderful opportunity to travel to Toronto with 165 high school music students. And you could not have handpicked, written a better list of what we would hope a trip would be than just the quality of spending time with such a wonderful group of high school students. The weather was awful, and the trip was wonderful. We just, they sang beautifully, played beautifully, were just gracious, and had fun together. And it was exactly what you would want from four days of fun, hectic experience with providing and learning about wonderful music. So I loved it. It was a highlight of my vacation, and very enjoyable. The other thing I would highlight, I think Emily probably has a big, long list of reports, but for us tonight, I just wanna call out how amazing you look in your new Westboro gear. And the fact that tonight, we decided that we would all wear something in honor of the fact that we launched our newly updated W today across the district. So that we would be able to show that it's been tweaked so that it is really a new, updated version, and it's fully trademarked as the Westboro W as a one-of-a-kind. And it will be highlighted on the new stadium field. And there's lots of fun opportunities for people across the community to purchase a new car magnet or a new sticker to embrace the new updated W. So I know that they will be in schools, in the offices, starting tomorrow. You can swing in and do $5 to get a new magnet or sticker. I know a lot of our kids put them on their computers and things, so that's really fun to have them pick those up. And I think we're gonna be putting them out at special events and things. So it's just a wonderful way to kind of get on board and celebrate the new W. So I just wanna say thank you to the fact that it also was done by internal art design team of our high school faculty art department, who put in incredible amounts of hours as we went back and forth and tweaked the W. I can't even tell you how many hundreds of times until it became our own unique new version. So I wanna commend the fact that they did an incredible amount of work for our district, and I wanna congratulate our new W. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Daniel?
Good evening. Just one update about the Mill Pond principal search. And we're in the final phase of the search. It's been going on for the last month about. I think I told you at the last meeting, we had 48 applicants. We're now down to two finalists. And yesterday and today, the two finalists spent the entire day at the Mill Pond School. They're both incredibly strong and talented educators. Patrick Nash is assistant principal in the, at the Gibbons Middle School here in Westboro. And then Peter Gallants, his assistant principal in Sharon Middle School. And so they, they spent the entire day, they met with parents at the beginning of the day. Then they visited classrooms, had an opportunity to meet all of the faculty at the school, and then met with curriculum coordinators and the senior administrators in the district. So the next few days, we'll be going through the feedback forms, and there'll be a lot of discussion about the candidates. And we're hoping that within a week's time, we'll have an announcement. Oh, sorry, yes. The Westboro Connects is going to be sponsoring on May 14th. Its second event, the first one that is Westboro Connects sole, you know, sort of sponsor of. Last one, we teamed up with Youth and Family Services. But this one is Westboro Connects sponsoring what we're calling Hot Topics in Education Forum. And it's gonna be from 6:30 to 8:30 at Mill Pond. And there's a number of workshops ranging in childhood, from topics such as childhood nutrition, how we use computers in the classroom today. It's basically for a K-8 audience, for parents to come in. There's gonna be, and these are gonna be basically two one-hour or 45-minute sessions where you can pick two topics to go to. So the first, you know, there's gonna be about eight different things that are offered. And for first hour, you go to one, the second hour, you can go to another.
I have the topics, if you want me to call them out.
Go ahead, call them out.
Just to help you out there, 'cause you wrote them, and they're beautiful. Today's classrooms, meeting the needs of all students, who are those amazing educators that support the people in your children's classrooms. You'll hear about co-teaching, RTI, workshop-based instruction, and more. Come ask your questions about today's classroom. There'll be one presented on nutrition, where Catherine Norris, we hope to have her come and do a presentation to families on home-based nutrition and really creating a great palette of foods for your child. Growth mindset for parents. We have a school counselors working with Suzanne Kenny, principal of Mill Pond. Makerspace, celebration of the movement we have to really innovate a lot of open teaching space. And Alison D. Fiore from Mill Pond, and a technology teacher, will be highlighting that.
And we'll have some Mill Pond kids there, too.
Yes, kids as well. Social and emotional learning in school curriculum. We hope to have a dynamic set of people that represent K to 12 and different avenues around social, emotional learning, the curriculum, and the ways that we provide support in the classrooms. Youth Behavior Risk Survey, an opportunity to really look at what are the risks in today's society that our youth are facing? How are Westboro teens responding based upon what we've learned from the Metro West Youth Survey? And we hope to have Chief Lori and Chip Dappleit and Roger Anderson team up on that. So we'll have a nice array of different people, technology in the classroom. Really just a rich array of workshops that we think people will be able to look at that and think, this is something I wanna have time to talk about, ask my questions, and learn a bit about. So we're really looking forward to hosting. I think it'll be a really nice evening. So those are really looking good.
Daniel?
That's it.
All right, Emily.
Hi. I have a few updates. Down at the elementary schools, our third graders are taking their first experience with MCAS. So I know that can be a little nerve-wracking, but the elementary school communities are coming together to help support them in that this week. Also, at Fails, they're collecting food for the food pantry throughout this week, and they wanna focus on like fruit cups or cups of applesauce and stuff like that. Jumping up to the high school, over vacation, we had a trip to Germany and Austria led by Dr. Ryan and Ms. Petosnak. And I have heard wonderful reports from people that were able to go on the trip. And I was jealous seeing all of their experiences.
Yeah, they had a great time, yeah.
Mrs. Bach touched upon the new W. On the fine arts end, Westboro was named one of the top communities for music education in the country, which is outstanding, and I think that's really great that our community can do that. Tomorrow is the annual gala concert and art exhibition. And all the proceeds will go towards scholarships for graduating seniors this year. Down at Gibbons, 38 Gibbons students will participate in the Central District Junior Festival this Saturday. So that's chorus and band and orchestra students. And at the high school, the music students had a great time on the Toronto trip.
They did, 'cause I went with them. It was really fun. And we had, the middle school went to Iceland. There was a group that traveled to Iceland as well and had a fabulous trip. I mean, the array of ways we've extended the global travel and taking 165 kids to Canada just really provided those opportunities for those experiences that you really wanted us to lift several years ago. So I'm really pleased with where we are.
So I really understand you had an experience crossing the border.
Yes, we definitely had.
For 165 kids.
165 kids across the border, where we had some of our paperwork that didn't quite line up. So there was a lot of yelling by the border crossing guards at us. And so it was an authentic travel experience. I think Mr. Martin deserves huge accolades, Director of Fine Arts, for navigating, taking the hit of getting yelled at and getting them all across the border. So they picked up a few good stories to travel back with, so, yeah. Emily, I understand you need to leave tonight. You have another obligation. So I wanna make you feel comfortable to head out whenever you need to, okay?
Thank you. Thank you. Kristen, how are you doing?
The only thing is, I just wanna say that on Saturday, I'm attending the Charting the Course workshop for school committee members, and it's in Easton at the Voc Tech High School. So I'll be there on Saturday. Looking forward to learning some more things about this role.
Great, thank you. Lisa?
So I did wanna give a shout-out to Darrell Petosnak and Dr. Ryan, because I had a daughter on that trip to Europe, which was, it just showed their experience working with kids on trips like this. EF Tours was so organized. And they, the two of them, and Mrs. Rodriguez, made it just so much fun for them. And as a parent, feeling like they were safe, which, so it was amazing. Also wanted to mention that today, I was at the Mass Association for School Committees, a day on the Hill up at the State House, where we listened to representatives and senator. Representative Aaron Vega and Senator Sal Di Domenico, who both run certain types of education committees. But more importantly, Noah Berger, who's the president of the Massachusetts Budget and Policy Center, spoke. And he was pretty extraordinary, reminding us that Massachusetts is the number one in education in the country. And yet, a lot of work to be done, because more than half our state is less than proficient in reading by fourth grade. That is not true, obviously, in Westboro, but it was interesting. And also, to talk a lot about how federal funding, although there's a lot of cuts being, happening, that Massachusetts is sort of keeping their head down and trying to do what they can do within the state, including circuit breaker, pushing it up to the 72%, even though they wanted 75% return. That's pretty good, they fought for it. There were a lot of areas where I do feel like our representatives and our senators are really fighting for our state to get the funding that it needs to do the job that we're really expected to do. And that more and more, and he talked about it today, that education overall is getting more and more expensive to do a good job, because the complexities of our students is increasing. And he talked about Massachusetts Foundation, and that the right of a Massachusetts resident, that education is not in that, where it is focused, is that the frame of government is required to have an education. That in order to create a democracy, it is imperative that we create an educated society. So it was really, it was a very impressive day. Then an incredible lunch was provided at the State House. And more importantly, organized by chef Lou Trudeau of Assabet Valley, organized 23 vocational schools who provided food for the entire State House and all the school committee members. So that was a great day, and it happens once a year on the Hill. Also wanted to mention the bus cleaning. Our bus company, for the first time, part of our contract is to have inside and outside cleaning of our buses. And we have been sort of pushing back for quite a while to make sure that happened. And they finally did hire an outside company. I did get some reviews back from some anonymous drivers, who wanted to let me know that some definitely noticed the inner cleaning, and some did not. But I will tell you that I looked in the last couple of days, and those buses were shinier than usual. So I feel like it's a step forward. And then finally, I wanted to, I also wanted to thank Karen Henderson and Westboro TV for continuing to have coverage of our open meetings. And then the final thing was the Board of Selectmen meeting. I wanted to let you know about, originally, it was required for a school committee member to come forward for the Charter Review Committee, which is analyzing and looking over our government to look to see if they have a recommendation for the town meeting, you know, down the line. And that would not take place until after the strategic planning process had taken place. So that group is not actually meeting for quite some time. And therefore, there is time to talk about the configuration of that committee. Initially, the intent was to have two Board of Selectmen, one Jim Malloy, one school committee member, one finance committee member, plus three residents of the town. And during a meeting about two weeks, three, four weeks ago, four weeks ago, they altered it to nine members of just residents. Now, interesting about that is there wasn't really a disclosure about how those meetings would run, how they would be organized, who would be running them. So I did bring it forth to the Chair of the Board of Selectmen. And we are on the agenda for May 8th to discuss the configuration or reconfiguration of that committee. They have already assigned those nine residents. They did that last night at their meeting. I only caught names of nine of them, but, you know, a pretty solid, you know, group of citizens have come forward to be part of a really important imperative committee. Because the change of government, or even the recommendation for a change of government, is something that will impact our town for decades, if not the next century to come. So I do feel that we should represent ourselves on May 8th to talk about whether there should be members of the town government, representatives from the committees, including Planning Board, including Finance Committee, Board of Selectmen, and School Committee. And I don't know how you all feel about it, but I wanted to make sure you were aware of it. Because I did sense from some of the interviews that they did of some of the residents that there was an expectation from residents that someone was gonna be leading those committees, leading those meetings. One of the interviewed members, residents, said he did not look into all the types of governments, because he assumed that when he got to a meeting, that whoever was running the meeting would describe all of the governments that they were contemplating. So I think the initial intent was to have some from local government, some from the town, in that there was an imbalance, which caused the Board of Selectmen to alter it to nine residents, which completely makes sense. It was imbalanced. But now it's, now slanted in another direction. So the question is, could that reconfigure to a more balanced committee for a very, very important topic? So just wanted to bring that to our attention.
Thank you. Thanks for your work on all that.
I do think, I do think there's a model in the sense that we've run two large committees that, and I think the town has as well at different times, that have been quite effective. And we ran our calendar committee that Dana and I co-chaired, which had 16 members on it, at least. And then our school start time committee was even larger. And we did some subcommittee work for research, and we brought back findings. We, it was a really, really vibrant committee, because we didn't do all of it as a whole group. But we came back, and we did surveys, and we analyzed the data. We provided multiple reports. Like I just, I think there is a framework for a dynamic committee like that to participate together effectively. And I'm thrilled that they added nine community members. I think it was highly responsive of the Board of Selectmen, and I applaud them for that. I think they should maintain the others on there as well. So I certainly would be in favor of us representing our voice, that as a substantial part of the town, that we would hope to be represented at the table. Thank you, Lisa.
There was one other committee post that was mentioned last night at the Board of Selectmen, and I'm just gonna mention it. There was a more of a, you're welcome to have a school committee member on this group or not. It's really up to the school committee. But it was for the, I wanna pronounce it correctly.
Hakamako Pond?
Say that again.
Hakamako Pond.
Hakamako Pond?
Yeah.
The reuse of that land is gonna be evaluated and analyzed and look for a strategic plan for it. And we are welcome to have a committee member, should we so choose, and.
I mean, based on past cases where the town has made decisions on land use that have directly affected the school, I think we should have someone.
Okay.
Yeah, that works. Anyone interested, offhand, or you wanna think about it? We could relax someone the next time. I think we probably have time, right?
We definitely have time.
If anyone wants to think about it, we could, we could put that on the agenda for next meeting?
Okay.
All right, we'll do that. Anything else, Lisa?
That is all, thank you.
Thank you for remembering that one, 'cause you mentioned that yesterday. Dave, do you have anything?
One quick one. So the Green Technology Advisory Group had a meeting where we brought in a representative from the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission. They are moving forward with facility audits. They're working on mass energy insight updates needed to get our buildings to current baseline. And progressing along in the way after town vote, that will allow us to become a green community and access some of those grants that are available. So that progress continues. They have a wonderful team. Stephen and I sit on that committee, although we're both double-duty in a lot of things. But Peter Dunback, who runs that, is doing a phenomenal job. And we are moving forward, I think, in the right direction for the town.
Great, thank you. Steve, welcome back.
Thank you. Not much to report this week. As I mentioned at the last school building committee for Gibbons, that I would, on behalf of the committee, make a presentation to the Board of Selectmen to bring the Board of Selectmen up to date in terms of the general progress on the Gibbons School. The bottom line is, we're in the final stages of closeout of the original contract scope of work. And as a result, at the current time, we have a balance of the budget, approximately $2.4 million, which was explained to the Board of Selectmen last night. Part of the reason for the ability to have that large remaining balance is because we did encumber about $550,000 for modular trailers to move kids out of the school to create, for the contractor, a larger space to work on at the same time. As a result of that, there was a fairly large efficiency in that process and resulted in that amount of money, the, being unspent at this time. Also, the bid came in slightly less, about $800,000 less than we anticipated in the original budget. But the second reason for presenting to the Board of Selectmen is the fact that the committee, as a result of additional engineering that was done near the end of the project, found that the support columns for the canopy, although still safe, have a useful ice probably less than 10 years. And so the committee moved forward with doing additional engineering to replace the canopy. And since it wasn't part of the original scope, I made the presentation to the Board of Selectmen to ask them for their blessing, if you will, for the committee to move forward with that project. And so where we are right now is the documents are posted. The progress walkthrough for the bid will occur on May 6th, with the bid results being received on the 16th. So the presentation to the Board of Selectmen was to give the Selectmen an opportunity to speak to the committee in terms of our use of the remaining funds for the canopy replacement. We estimate that the canopy will cost somewhere between $700,000 and $800,000, still leaving a significant amount of balance in the project. But we felt as a committee that we should give the Selectmen the opportunity to hear their story and respond to us if they wish to. It's still timely for the Selectmen to respond before we, as a committee, make a commitment for that construction. So that's really where we are in the last couple of weeks.
Great, thank you. I don't have anything to add, really. W's are for sale, as Amber said. In the offices, everyone has them now. And, "Breeding is on Track," we're starting a school challenge next week. So look out for envelopes coming home. And then you can put your donation right in the envelope and send it right back to school. Kind of targeting the elementary schools, making sure that parents down there know that the track project will benefit our whole community, and just trying to get some momentum with the fundraising. So thank you for everyone who has participated and spreading the word. I appreciate it. So I think we're moving on to citizens' requests at this point. Any citizens? Said?
I wanna be clear, I'm here as a citizen. And that is all I'm here for. I didn't know if you guys knew.
Oh, wait, one second, sorry. As a citizen, can you just state your name?
Oh, yes, Said Hashmri, Lyman Street.
Thank you.
And as I said, I'm here as a citizen. I didn't know if the board was aware, but John Battenhausen from Youth and Family Services announced his intent to retire. I think that date is going to be sometime in August. And I would urge the Chair and perhaps the Board that, you know, you guys have a particular expertise in children, and that it may be worth your time to be involved in the search committee for that. And I would urge that you reach out to the Board of Selectmen to potentially express your interest in having a member or several members from your board or the community involved in that.
Yeah, great, thank you. I did not know that.
That's really important, thank you.
We appreciate it, yeah. Thank you. No, that's okay. Yeah, thank you. We appreciate that. All right, anyone, anyone else? Any other citizens, citizens' requests? All right, seeing none. We have, let's see, oh, the field trip. Request approval of field trip to England, Susan Smith.
Hello.
Hi, welcome.
I'm Susan Smith. I have Dr. Todd Ryan here also, just for expert backup, in case I need him. But I've been teaching English at the high school for 11 years. And I'm proposing a trip to London, England for April 2019 with EF Tours. And I think it's gonna be a trip that's educational and entertaining for our students. I know there are some things that I'm looking forward to seeing myself, like Stonehenge, Shakespeare's Birthplace, Piccadilly Circus, Buckingham Palace. We might see, you know, Kate and Will and the kids, maybe Megan and Harry, probably Adele, maybe some Monty Python guys. It should be a good time, in addition to Shakespeare's Birthplace, of course. But I'm hoping that we could get that approved and see what kind of interests we get.
When was the last time we did in England?
Oh, I have no, I, not that I know of.
What did you say?
Have you done in England before?
No, this. My understanding is that we haven't done this version of this trip, so this is a new trip. So you get the gold star for crafting a new trip focused on combination of literacy and history, which integrates super well with the itinerary that's laid out. We are New Englanders, so we're gonna see the, you know, original England, the old England, part of our cultural heritage a little bit, somewhat. So yeah, I think it would be, I know that in my freshman class, we read Shakespeare and Dickens this year. So there's two right there. Yeah, it should be good.
What was the price tag on this one? I didn't see it.
This one is $3,400. It includes the insurance and all the optional excursions, so the London Eye, Stratford. So the London Eye, Stratford, um Oxford, um Stonehenge and any of the other extra excursions, I decided to go for all of those. So I think what would be left over might be the gratuities. Would be the only thing not included in that price. And that, yeah, that includes the insurance.
Do you have a maximum amount of students you can take?
Uh, not that I know of. The way I understand, I mean, I guess I hadn't thought about the maximum yet.
I'm just anticipating it being popular and exciting.
That sounds great. I know that there are, I could, I would probably not have too hard of a time finding chaperones if the number, you know, as it's every six students is an additional chaperone. So I have um surveyed Dr. Ryan and um Nadia Ragunu. She's a math teacher. I don't know how to pronounce her last, last name. Um, and a few other teachers already, depending on how many students we get so that I know whether or not they would be able to be chaperoning. Um, I think Daryl might also, depending on how much response she gets to her Portugal trip. And I haven't asked too many teachers just because I wasn't sure it was gonna go and I'm not sure about, I know there are a couple of other trips at the same time. I'm hoping there are there enough students to make it a fun time. Um, but I, I, this is my first one, I wasn't sure what kinda response I would get.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know if the EF Tours company has a max, maximum about. They do by the bus load.
They do.
By the bus, okay.
By the bus load.
Yeah, and I think Todd has good experience with helping you make decisions around whether or not you wanna end up with one or two buses and that changes your experience. I would certainly advise one bus. Yeah, I think, I think one bus keeps you. And I think that would allow you to take more, certainly than 24 students. You could go up quite a few and still take one bus. So I think, um, you know, in terms of opportunity, um, one, I think it's great to see Sue stepping up and we have a new trip traveler putting together a new trip. It'll touch a different group of students. I could see some of our younger travelers who sometimes wait to travel later being interested in this trip. Um, and I, I think that it feels like a comfortable excursion and that many of the parents have traveled the area. And so the idea of sending their children over there feels a little more comfortable.
Yeah, I, I like the idea, for me, that it's one city. And it's sometimes, I know it's great to see a lot of places and you can do that in Europe, but I like the idea of getting a little more comfortable in, in one place, getting to know it a little more.
For the record, could you speak to um where the money comes from? I think um, uh, just to uh describe the, the funding for the, for the each kid and where the source for the money comes from.
Uh, the source, I believe, is 100% parents.
Right, I just wanted that to be known.
Yes.
So that in fact, it isn't the school system that's funding this.
Correct.
It's, it's the parents uh for, for the.
Or the kids themselves.
Yeah, well, however it gets there, but.
Students, yes.
My daughter raised her own money for the Europe trip that just came back. She still owes $600, but that's okay.
We do have some groups that will fundraise, sometimes when they have a window on a trip. I know the middle school has done that. I think the high school has as well.
We, I think we're thinking about um a, a kind of travelers' event. And so maybe something will come from that. That's not, I, that's something that Colleen Gormley was talking about, so maybe something will come from that. I'm not sure, but we're thinking about putting on a little sort of a traveling fair um with information about the different trips and, you know, visuals from the trips that have already happened. Um, and looking at some other things to raise more interest and maybe possibly some fundraising at some point.
Do you think you'll have any problem with the language?
Yes. Yes. They'll, they'll hate our accents, no. Yeah.
And Susan, have you ever been to?
I haven't. And I, I'm, I'm a big fan of comedy, um, in addition to English. So part of me feels like I, you know, I ju- I definitely need to be there. And it just makes so much sense for me to pick a place like this. I've been to um, I've been to Italy. I went to um, uh, Italy and, when I was in high school for an art history trip and that was amazing. But I haven't been to England. Um, so I just, it just seemed like a, something that made sense for me and students.
As someone who has an office where I have employees in both Boston and London and Brisbane, I've done a lot of what this trip is. And this is actually a really nice cross-section of things that the students, I think, will enjoy. And it's all very walkable, which is much easier to handle.
Right. I would like to get um just who your second anchor traveler is gonna be at a certain point. Have you determined that?
I think it would be Todd.
You are gonna go as the second Todd? Okay. Okay, alright. No, that's good. I think it's always more enjoyable for you to do a first travel with students. I mean, when you've got someone that's done it a lot and can work out the kinks and model all the seamless ways that, that our trips have run. I mean, I certainly know, um, when I, when I traveled to Toronto, I get to be number two. Chris is number one and he does all the work. And it's really enjoyable to see how he's streamlined everything, so.
I do know that they will send me on a short practice trip. Not sure where, but partly to get my feet wet with doing the tour. Which, you know, is not everything, but it'll help a little bit.
Definitely, it's exciting.
Are there any other questions?
No, I'm good.
Alright, can we get a motion?
I'd move that, that the trip proposed to be voted in favor, second.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, Sue, good luck.
Okay, next we have our Chartwell's food service update.
Todd, you did miss before you leave hearing all the accolades for your trip and, and how much the kids enjoyed being with you. So thank you very much for another successful venture.
Daryl did all the work.
Thank you. Hello.
Hi, nice to see everybody again.
It's good to see you, so welcome.
Amazing how fast a year goes.
I know, it is.
We were just here a year ago. Well, thanks for the time today. Uh, we probably wouldn't get everybody on the road for game seven, right? The Bruins? Don't hurry up, no. So we're just here to present a yearly recap and talk about our financials and what's coming up next year. Um, you guys all have packets in, in your folders, new packets, right? Okay, so one, some exciting things we've done this year. Uh, we had a student from Birmingham State University, an RD student, come in and do some, uh, some lab work. Um, spent time at the Gibbons. Uh, you can see he's done quite a bit of, uh, quite a bit of stuff uh going on. He was busy. Claude, I kept him on his toes and got our money's worth since we didn't pay anything. Right, that's good. Um, so it's good. Um, last year, we were asked to do a K through three survey and we did that. And the results are actually, they're posted on the website, if I'm not mistaken, right? Yeah, all good results, um, interesting comments, but we're, you know, we're deciding on how to respond to some of them. Can we have butter? Can we have salt? Yeah, sushi, things like that, which, which we would love. Uh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So the survey, we, we did it for all of the elementaries and we were hoping to get, you know, some feedback on what they were looking for, different than what we already serve. Um, but after reviewing the results, we found that the things that they want are sushi. You know, like they're happy with everything they're getting now. Um, we thought more ethnic foods, you know, that they would look for, but that wasn't the case. So if you wanted to review them, you could go to the website and you could see, you know, the results there. Um, we put them up on the website for, you know, everybody to see. And out of all of the elementary students, we only received 345 response, you know, from the survey. So not, you know, as much as we expected, but.
That's still a fairly good return. Now, that's a very good return. You should feel good about that. People paid attention to my percentages. Daniel will tell you that's a good yield because sometimes a family represents multiple kids. So I think that you should be pleased with that.
Yeah, okay, good.
It gives you good data. It represents, what do you always tell me, statistically relevant.
Yes.
Awesome.
That's always good.
Great, good. We've done many promotions throughout the year, Dr. Sue's Chinese New Year, uh, quite a bit. National Nutrition Month, we did salad shakers. Uh, Red Stock opening day, foreign, foreign language week. Uh, they're all pretty much, they're laid out here for you. Staff training was important. We do, did a lot of allergy training, cashier training, customer service training, the training on our Nutrislice phone application, which was neat. Claude, yeah, go ahead.
I wanted to point out the, um, the kitchens received certificates of merit from the Board of Health for the kitchens. So, you know, kudos to the, the staff. They do a wonderful job, you know, and that just goes to prove it.
They didn't all get them, but most of them did, right? So I think.
There was only one that didn't.
Okay.
Yeah, but the other five did.
Okay, yeah. I just wanna be clear so that we're, the, they did, we did very, very well. And the fact that one of our kitchens didn't get that doesn't reflect badly on them. It's just that, that's the super high standard, so.
That's the excellence, that's the gold medal.
Yep.
Good. Uh, some of the things for, for upcoming year, we actually have a program called Waste Not. It's a sustainability program focusing on food waste. Uh, basically starts from when it comes into door to when it hits the disposal. Uh, basically, it, it, the associates will track, say if they're cutting a tomato, uh, the ends of the tomato. They actually weigh it and they associate a food cost with it and see if we can reduce that. And also it takes it from the amount of uh food garbage, if you will, food waste, tomatoes, celery, leaves, uh, you know, pepper, middles of peppers, carrot skins, things like that, that instead of going in the trash, would go into a, a food bin. So maybe some local farmers can pick it up, pig farmers, which is really popular in a lot of schools. And also kinda separates, uh, you know, the production cost and it'll help that, that, that poundage of that food waste will help offset some of the, the hauling cost for the trash. It's kinda neat. So that'll be rolled out in September. Pretty good.
Do you, do you already have farms engaged or is that something you're working on?
No, no, that's pretty much a, you know, there's no liability in the district at all. It's just food waste that goes to pigs. So it's really whatever, Claude Ed and, and we'll work with, you know, with, with the district to see who can come in. They'll, we'll get quite a few, every, every district. We do it on Tantasca. There's a line of people that just, that want it. Cuz it's a good, it's a good amount, it's food waste. It's, you know, stuff that you normally would see at home, the bottoms of the celery, the, the tops of the leaves, the tomato, the tops of the tomatoes, things like that. So it's pretty engaging.
And I'm just, I'm thinking locally, obviously, cuz we have multiple farms that are operating.
Sure.
Both that have animal and would use as, you know, compost, so.
Beautiful, great.
So Claude, you had mentioned that while we're doing this, you don't anticipate there's a, a lot of waste out of the kitchens.
No, I don't think there's a lot of waste coming out of the kitchens at all.
No, it's the normal, it's the normal waste that you would see, uh, food waste. So it's, if, if they were to do a cantaloupe, it's the rind of the cantaloupe, it's the middle of the cantaloupe. Uh, it's the, you know, the honeydews, the, you know, the stuff, the normal stuff. And it fills, you'd be surprised, it fills a bucket pretty, you know, a, a five gallon bucket between the, you know, the schools. It'll fill it probably one or two a day, just on the, the day-to-day waste, instead of going into the trash and paying for that.
It'll be interesting to see, you know, we're gonna track it, so it'll be, see what the results come out from that.
I'm wondering if, if Brooke was in fourth or fifth grade, if there's some kinda curriculum connection to that. I don't know if there's like a composting unit that the students study, but it might be interesting to link them up. You know, if you're collecting that data, could they use that data somehow and then find, you know, help you find those community resources to do that composting or just kinda.
Yeah, and we could, we could turn it into a PR event where we've got pitches with the farmer and the kids and stuff like that, which we've done.
It's all part of like that green initiative and sustainability.
No doubt about it.
I think it's a great idea. Yeah?
Great. Uh, we've got Ava the Rabbit, which is one of our three costume characters, if you will, coming to the elementary school. We have uh three costumes in our district in New England that are designed by Disney and they're humongous costumes. It's, it's. Yeah, it's a, it's a treat to be in them because they're, they're really big. Kids love them. So they'll be coming. Um, we also have chef, our executive chef, Jared Becker, coming in on May 11th to do staff training. He's gonna come in and just talk about food safety, yeah, safety, knife, knife skills, things like that.
It's gonna be hands-on too, so the staff will like that.
Could you discuss the program for beverage, beverages?
The beverage program?
Yeah.
The beverage program?
Sure. Yeah, what, what we do is we're taking more of a scientific approach to uh beverages, similar to a, to a higher ed. So we have only a limited amount of beverages that we can supply to the schools. Uh, flavored waters, milk, uh, anything over an eight ounce juice, we can't serve in schools per the DESE guidelines. So what we do is, um, we're gonna increase the, we work with Pola to increase some of the options that we can have within those guidelines. And what we do is we do what's called mapping the survey, where in each one of the cafeterias will place uh different beverages at the right heights and the right places for the students. Uh, ambient water is very popular now, where you grab a one liter of, say, Smart Water by the register at the high school. And you'd be amazed at the amount of students that'll grab one and put it in their, in their backpacks for after-school activities and things like that, where instead of just putting it in one cooler over to the side, we'll put some in front of each registers, maybe uh in front of each different station. So they can come over and go, alright, makes sense, I'll grab my water, I'll grab my juice, grab my milk. So it just makes, just more of a, of a business sense to it. And that's it for, for the update, but financials were, were looking really good this year. Um, profitability-wise, considering the extremely rough March we've all had, which has been crazy in a lot of districts, but um, you can see the results there. So far, profit and loss, year-to-date, we're up about $20,000 through, this is through uh February, I believe?
March.
March, I'm sorry, March. So yeah, everything's, uh, it's been a good year. Sales are up. Couldn't, couldn't write any better. And I think that's all we've got. If there's any questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
No, I can remember many years ago where the, the profit and loss was nowhere near what you're showing now. So congratulations to all of us.
And if you, if you need volunteers for England, we're, we're available to tackle on, just to make sure the food's proper and, you know.
One thing that I wanted to mention on here, it, uh, was the additional notes down below at the very bottom line. Our um student outstanding balance. And this is cumulative for many, many years and it's very low compared to other districts.
It's my lowest in 14 districts.
What's that?
It's my lowest in 14 districts.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's a dream to have that.
You said it's cumulative, so it just kind of rolls like that?
But I would recommend.
Does it ever roll off or do we leave it on there?
Well, my recommendation tonight would be to um, the policy subcommittee, me on a meal charge policy. We're required by Destiny to have that and we don't have one. And part of that meal policy would be to state, what do you do with that balance? Do you, you know, pay for it out of the general fund? Do you write it off? You know, when the students, this is not only student outstanding balance, it's the teachers as well, the staff?
This is student.
Just students, okay. So um, it, it can be simple, but we really should have one.
Yeah, they required as of July 1st this past year, the DESE to have a charging policy, if you will. And in their audits next year, from what I understand, when they come in to do our annual audits, they assess a fiscal penalty to the school for not having it in place. Uh, small, but depending on, on it is. But it's, and we do that, I've got 15 or 16 different district policies to pull from.
Yeah, we can pelt her from other districts.
Yeah, it's, it's.
It'd be easy enough to do.
Yeah, we have a policy meeting coming up in May.
Sure.
I'm sure timing's for that.
And you said this is like the smallest balance you have.
Oh yeah, I ju- I wish I could have this. I have schools, I have schools with 1,500 students with $35,000, $40,000 of outstanding debt. And it's mostly a handful of folks, a handful of families that are just, just don't pay. But, you know, and again, the policy will help.
I remember from before that um, we still provide lunch to students if they have.
If they don't have their money.
Well, not financial need, but if they don't have their money. Their parents haven't paid their.
Of course, yeah. And that's, that's the charging policy. It's, whether it's a dollar limit and then you go to a cheese sandwich. A lot of districts won't do that.
Right, but we.
Or you, or you just, and it depends on, it's, it's, this, this district will be fine. It's just based on the, the culture that's already established, but the policy.
Each school has their own policy that they guide, their guidelines, so we can compile all of them and maybe do a consistent district-wide policy.
Well, that makes sense.
Can you talk a little bit to Claudette about um the maintaining of the allergy-based policy updates and the practices to make sure? We did a lot of work, I think, two years ago to make sure that our practices were in place and our families that have students with allergies. I wonder if you can just be reassuring about all the training practices and things that you do have in place?
Yep, we have training on, on allergies every year, you know, as part of that, um, to, you know, satisfy that policy that they have here. Um, the allergies, they're all in the, you know, the computer, the POS systems for all the students. Um, the nurses contact me when there's a, you know, a change with allergies. And like I go into the year register and put it in there, there's an alert that comes up for every cashier when the student puts their little PIN number in and it, it pulls up what they're allergic to. And, you know, um, the, the cash registers, they make sure, the cashiers, they make sure that, you know, they're checking and doing what they need to do. Um, sometimes we have, um, and the managers in the kitchens, they know, um, read labels, read labels, read labels. I instill that in them, you know, it's so important that we read labels. Sometimes we can get um a substitute product and, and they know that they need to read those labels. The um, the NutraKids app that we have runs with our menu planning, if you would say it. How, is that how you would say it?
Yep.
Um, so anything that we have in the, in our menus, we put in our manufacturers of all our products that we, we have from um the distributor and it, and it reads with the, the app. So all of it's like all in there. So you have to be pretty accurate with the labels, with the manufacturer numbers.
Yeah, one of the nee- one of the neat features of Nutrislice, if you can go on from home, you can't, it's not available on the, on the mobile phone, but if you go onto the Nutrislice app, uh, if you were, have a student with one of the eight major allergies, you know, soy, eggs, wheat, fish, uh, things like that, you can click on the allergies that they have and it'll actually lock out with a line what they can't have for that day. Then they can print the menu. So not only does it show, this is what you can have as a parent to a student, helps with education, it doesn't get to the point where it's like, well, Claude, you can't have this and you can't have this and you can't have this. It shows them. It shows them the menu items that they actually get, which is kind of cool. And that's available on the, on the site.
Do you, do you...
Sorry, good.
I'm sorry. So in addition to that, the, at the serving line, everything is labeled with the, the major allergies, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, we established that a couple of years ago as well. So they can see it right there when they're...
Right.
So, so you're saying that the cashier, the name pops up, if they've taken something that's, has an allergy, that the student has, it will pop up?
You'll put in your PIN number, your picture will pop up and it'll have an alert. It'll say nut allergy. So that, that, and this is already the third step into this, into the thing. The cashier will take a look and say, "Wait a minute, Claudette, you can't have this as a triple check." And so he'll check the tray similar at the time of service. Yeah.
I like the layout of this. Do you think we could add the dates those trainings take place, just so it's part of the record of your annual report? Because then I think it affirms that, I know you track all that, Claudette. You're really good about it. So you've got a nice listing of all the different trainings that you do and the staff training and development.
Yep.
So when you do those, when you submit this report annually, why don't we just put the dates that those trainings took place? And then we really have a, a public record that we're checking the box on those trainings and that they've happened.
We've got a book this big, the DESE. That's one of the things they, they ask us on. They want dates and sign-offs.
Just, these are all required trainings and I think we just want as part of their annual report that comes to school committee on the record, the dates for those. I hope it doesn't caught, just put it in a table and attach it, just so that we have as part of that record that those happened. So we just feel really, because it's a nice framework. It's very easy to read. It gives you good highlights. I really like it. I just, I think that'd be one piece to add. So really, I appreciate it.
That's easy enough to do.
Sure.
In, in terms of allergies, do you get a feedback loop on incidents that have happened? Do you know or do you track the number so that you can learn from that?
I don't think we've had one in two years, right? Not even, yeah, I think...
I don't track, I don't track that. The nurses have a very tight...
I know the nurses have a very tight list. I'm wondering if that feedback comes back to you, because I know of incidents that have happened where the nurses have dealt.
It will come, it'll come back through the managers, because they, they get, you know, they get panicked, you know, and they'll, they'll call and they'll say if something has happened or not. So, yeah, I do, I do know, but I don't, I don't track any of it, you know.
Yeah, it's something the nurses.
Right.
Great, thank you.
I just had a quick question about the whole grain waiver.
Yes.
Does that mean they could have a waiver on any type or is it just the whole grain?
Here's the funny deal with this. The DESE requires the pasta, the bread, the rolls, the hot dog rolls, and the pizza to be whole grain. With the new administration, they've actually, we realized that not too many people are happy with that, right? So they've offered us the opportunity in districts to put in what's called the whole grain waiver. Still need to serve fifty percent of the pizza whole grain for that day, but if you put in for the waiver, you can actually get a white pizza. But the process takes about three months to do. And it offers the student, like, here's an example of how, of how crazy it gets. With each type of pasta, you have to put in a waiver. So spaghetti gets a waiver, rotini gets, macaroni, macaroni gets a waiver. So we put in for a few of those and you have to do it each year. So by the time it comes through, if we were to get that, it'll probably be May.
Yeah.
So then we, we admit. So it just gives the students more popular in high school. You know, macaroni and cheese, to be honest, macaroni, fettuccine alfredo, fettuccine alfredo with whole grain pasta, although it's tasty, it looks gray. And with a regular pasta, it looks, looks different. So they just allowed us the chance to, in all districts, to go in to, to put in for the waiver. We found it popular. Sales have gone up in, in some cases. But you still have the healthy option available every time you serve it.
And the students have to sign a petition. So many signatures.
Yeah, they signed it, yeah.
Yeah.
They signed for the pasta, not for the pizza crust and the, and the rice and...
Yeah. And keep in mind, these, these are, these, uh, these protocols have been in place for six and a half years. So, you know, from seventh grade down, that's all they've ever known in school, in school food service. So it's kind of a, what they, the norm is. So we don't want to get too far away from that in regards to healthy eating and healthy options.
And you have to apply every year?
Every year for every...
You have to get the petition signed?
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's, uh, they've, we've done things where it's been petition, it's been done on district letterhead. We've had to do votes. We'd have to do side-by-side comparisons. It's, they're pretty tough and mass. In, in New Hampshire, you just ask for it and they give it to you. Say, "I gotta take it." But it's, it's what we do. But it's, again, still an option.
I was looking through the list of requests, like mini Oreos, that came through on the, the surveys. But there is actually quite a bit of, like, the Asian, the Chinese, the sushi, like you're saying. Another pretty kind of valid one, I thought, was like more toppings on the pizza. I don't know.
Oreos are a great one because they're like allergy-friendly to everyone who has... They're like completely fake, so anyway.
I don't think Oreos are going to make the menu, but I appreciate that. I appreciate the try.
Yeah. But there are some, a couple of common themes on there that I don't know if you wouldn't mind looking into.
Yeah.
Sushi might be a little tough. I get that. A little maybe out of the price range, too.
Yeah, yeah.
But you do serve the Asian, you do serve...
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's rotation.
And the increased vegetarian options, I've noticed, just because we have so many students that that's part of the diet.
Yeah, we do. There's a lot of vegetarian options for them. Yeah.
Okay.
Great questions. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, great. Thank you.
Have a good night.
We are five minutes ahead of schedule and I do not see our town moderator.
So he knew that he has a commute and with the rain, it's tough. So I think I would recommend, Madam Chair, that you rotate the health and wellness program review in front of... Because I do see that Mr. Roger...
Oh, look at that.
Oh, look at that. All right. John, would you like an opportunity to transition Mr. Arnold and...
I'll be right there.
Okay. Oh, wow, that is okay, Roger. You get to sit. All right.
All right, so our town moderator just arrived. I'm going to give him a couple of minutes to get settled, but, um...
We were just saying, you know, he had to travel in the rain and we were getting ready to let John...
Third in a row of three-hour round trip commutes. So it's been a delightful week. So anyway, let me just get my notebook open.
No, check your time.
So anyway, thank you for your patience. Now that I'm back, I guess I don't mind so much saying in the public session, but the Friday after-town meeting, I went on a business trip for four weeks and just got back last Friday. So I almost know what time zone it's in.
How many time zones was that, John?
I was in India for most of the time. So it was like nine and a half hours ahead.
Oh, I want to hear about that trip.
They tell me it takes, it takes a day for every time zone to get straight.
Yeah, that's what I'll find out. So, so we're getting there. So it seems like forever ago. And, and I want to thank Amber and Andrea for getting in touch, but as you know, I have the tradition of trying to go to all the elected bodies and do a sort of post-annual town meeting debrief. And then once I get settled, I'll also have an open forum for just regular voters, so everybody equal session. So I want to thank you for kicking this off. I'll try to get to the planning board, the selectmen, library trustees, et cetera, soon. I don't have a lot to say, other than I know there were a few sort of last-minute things that got thrown our way. I think we dealt with them. I was as surprised, or it was more than anyone, that we got done on Saturday. So I'll thank you all for your patience and for your contribution and especially for continuing to get the word out about town meeting. And I haven't had time to really prepare any specific thoughts, so I'll just open it up for any comments you have and then if thoughts come to mind, I'll let you know.
Yeah, thank you. We always appreciate the opportunity to give you some feedback and, you know, debrief the, debrief the meeting. Does anyone want to start?
I mean, before we get into comments, I, I just have to commend and thank you for your continued dedication and the organization and delivery that you provide for town meeting is outstanding.
Thank you.
Your ability to reach out to so many members of the community ahead of time, offer your time for them to understand better what they're actually voting on is outstanding and really helps support us to be a functioning town.
Well, thank you.
So thank you.
Again, I think that, I think that for all that work that I put in, as long as people think that it helps, A, voters be better prepared, B, have more voters show up, and C, make all those who show up realize that things go more smoothly the more people know about town meeting and how it works. And I continue to tell people that if you really care, getting involved early in the process is better. But of course, by the time the Saturday or the Monday night rolls around, some people have not had the opportunity to do that. But, but thank you for, for, I'm just glad people notice. Thank you.
I guess I would add, you know, based on our form of government and its structure, that clearly the moderator is one of the major checks, is the checks and balance system that we have in our, our government structure. And I certainly appreciate that fact as well, John, for all the things you do, not only before the public, but as a benefit to the public in all the things you do outside of the public view.
Yeah, thank you. Again, I, again, I, I, just like yourselves here, I view myself as an educator. It used to be, when I grew up in town, that almost everybody in town grew up in New England and knew what town meeting was. And now there are many, many, many people who are from other parts of the country or other parts of the world who have, find it hard to fathom that every voter can show up and speak their piece and we actually get it done relatively efficiently. And I think we have a track record of, A, making good decisions and, B, I think because of the input and because people have their chance, having a lot less acrimony than it might otherwise be there. So, so I appreciate it and I appreciate the opportunity to let people understand how America got this form of government and, and it strengthens its weaknesses, so.
I also think that this past town meeting showed, you know, your own stretch and ability. Because, I mean, Article fourteen comes to mind where the amendment of the amendment of the amendment was a really fascinating education in town meeting government. It was a really well, I mean, as, as much as it took, you were monitoring it so, in, in ways we'd never, we'd never seen you go that far. So it was really...
I haven't done it till eleven years, I believe.
That was amazing.
Well, it's where the confluence of sort of my civic duty and my engineering flowchart, computer programming background comes to play. And also, I will continue to thank the tutelage, not only the specific question-and-answer sessions, but I also had the opportunity of watching Joe Harrington, who I think is one of the best ever for twenty-seven years. And I, I never, I never took a course in how to be a moderator, but I absorbed it over twenty-five years. And Joe continues to be a source. And I will, all the, the credit, I will give him for just setting the tone and sort of giving me examples that I can look back on for how to, how to work your way through problems. And, and again, I think, I hope people appreciate it. I try to explain where we are and how we got there and what's currently up there, because I know when I sat at town meeting, every once in a while, you know, if you're, you're zoned out and you're knitting or you're on your iPad or you're listening, but just don't realize, how did we get from here to here to here and what are we voting on? And so I, I try to, again, it's, I think in town meeting, every moment is a teaching moment and every time that, that people have a chance to understand where we are, where we're going and how we got there. It, everybody can sort of, as a group, can understand a little bit more about the process each time. So thank you.
I do wonder whether you get the support you need. I was curious as I was sitting there, you know.
Well, my family lets me do it, so. And as, as my mother, I'm sorry, let's see, my mother watching tonight, as my mother told me last night when I got home and said like, "Well, you know, last night I went to the selectmen's meeting and then tonight, by the way, I'd almost forgotten I had the school committee and then tomorrow night I'm talking about town meeting to a Cub Scout pack." And my mother said something along the lines of, "Well, you're back in the rat race," or whatever it is she said. So, yeah, I think I have the support of, of, of many people and I do, I do thank them for that. I don't expect to... I just want the, the support of the voters, not of me, but I want the voters to understand that this town is only as great as we together make it. And I think we have a good track record. And I just, I don't, I don't want to be the one who ruins it, so. So a, a little sense of fear sort of goes into giving the motivation.
John, I have one quick question. I think we talked about this a couple of years ago. There are so many people that move to town who don't understand, and you've, we've offered classes and we've offered some, some different things. I know Jim's done his course that he's provided, the leadership course. And I think that it was amazingly fruitful in that the number of people that went through that class that have entered town government is very high.
I think everyone has either taken on a volunteer slot or at least become a town meeting regular, so.
So there, there's a piece of that around offering that regularly. And I, I think that we've discussed being happy to return to participating in helping to provide that framework and putting together that course and working with Jim and the selectmen in tandem or just... I think we need to have that as a sustained opportunity and it could probably run through Westboro Connects now that we have a community outreach framework, where it could be sponsored as a regular part of, you know, an opportunity for people to get educated.
Right.
But I wondered when people move into town, do we give them, do they get like some type of written information about what town meeting is? Like, how do they actually, I couldn't remember when I came. But I mean, like, I know there's the newcomers' club, but like, when you move into town and when you get your information and you're finally here and you've bought your house, like, how do you actually get information?
Yeah, that's a good question. Actually, the idea that just came to mind, I wrote down, when you move into town. And I think there, I mean, I don't think there's an active sort of welcome wagon like there used to be when you get all sorts of...
There is a newcomers' club.
Yeah, like it used to be. I remember getting lots of trinkets.
Realtors actually have their own, each one is so individualized, but if you were to supply the realtors of the town a base of like some kind of...
Introduction, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, mine came with like coupons to the, you know, local stores and, but I did have like a booklet, but it had to have been that realtor who was providing it.
The other thing with, if you register, people register to vote, I could work with Wendy to see if there's sort of like a, you know, here's, here's your, your government in action and try to explain.
It might even be that, you know, gosh, we actually do a mailing home to people old school, but that we, that we put something out where people get what it is, how you can participate and how it works. Because we've found at different times where, where young parents are like, "I had no idea that I could go to town meeting and vote." Or "I didn't realize that's what that was."
Yeah, I think last October, that twelve hundred and fifty people was a real eye-opener.
Exactly right.
I had neighbors who I think said, "I didn't know you did that."
Right, exactly right. So I think, I think working on a better base, and we certainly, again, as, as members of the community, would be happy to work on, I mean, that's something our social studies department could draft. Like, we really do think of educating people in the community and having them get something about, "You need to register. Here's how you do it and then you can go to town meeting."
I mean, just to speak to, to what was discussed earlier. And that simply is, is that our government started with John Adams, who wrote the Constitution of Massachusetts. And one of the key points in what he wrote was, in fact, education is necessary for democracy, as, as was said earlier. So the flame needs to keep alive. And if we don't do it, who's going to do it?
Right.
And we, we certainly have the vehicles to be able to create such a process for people to learn.
Right. And also, I, I don't know, I, I am remiss in not knowing exactly how active the board is in sort of adult education in town. I know that it's one of the things that the board is, necessarily have to do. But either that or through the school parent groups, I've developed a little slideshow that I've done for high schoolers. I've done for elementary school students. And the materials that I did for the Leadership Academy, I would certainly be more than, more than willing to explain the take on the legislative-executive branches and how it works. If any, if either you wanted to offer it as a, as a course or if any of the parent groups wanted to have a night, you know, where, where I or some other people would speak. I mean, I, I have materials that I've developed along the way. And again, it's completely nonpartisan. I don't talk... Again, my, my theory is, my job isn't to tell people how to vote. My theory is to make sure that they know they can vote and to inform them about what they're voting on. And I have an intrinsic belief that if that works, then everything else can get taken care of through the process. So, so I, you know, so I'll offer up if anybody, if either any of the school groups or if you want to try a trial program of, you know, just explaining how it all works, I can show you and walk through my materials and I'll work with anybody who's interested.
Yeah, thank you. That's something for us to think about, right?
Yeah, I also think about reaching to, reaching out to renters who are registered to vote.
Oh, yeah.
So there's homeowners and then we have lots of renters who are here and registered to vote in town.
Yeah, that's where going through the town clerk, that's somebody who, I mean, and it could be that people don't think about it when they first move to town, but certainly we know that, you know, when Senate and presidential elections roll around, people go like, "Oh, I should figure out how to vote." And so again, maybe I can, I'll take it as something to, as one of, one of my many side projects to maybe work with Wendy and see if we could come up with a little, you know, intro to Westboro Town Government to give away when people register to vote. And especially, you know, and also, if anything's done at the high school level for eighteen-year-olds or, you know, I know, I know there's no time within the MCAS era for like civics and things like that, but I'll, I'll open up.
We definitely have...
I'll open up, I'll go talk to anybody.
I just want to be clear as superintendent of schools that we do teach civics in Westboro. We actually take it very seriously in our, in our social studies department.
Yeah.
At the high school as well as across the middle school, really intensifies the look at constitution and the fundamental framework of our government and really committed to that.
I know with my own kids and with my nephews, when they went through high school and they were getting ready to vote, it was always interesting for them to explain my, my purview on having been someone who, who made it a point on my eighteenth birthday to register to vote. And then I got elected when I was nineteen and have essentially been doing stuff ever since. It's always engenders interesting conversations about, like, "So you did what again?" So.
Is there anything on the town website describing town meetings?
Yeah, unfortunately, it's not easy to find, but yeah, I should, I'll, I'll continue to work on that. Yeah, I've also been thinking of...
Video.
Yeah, I mean, I have, just because, A, I'm busy and B, as a tribute to Joe, Joe has actually town meeting like one-on-one videos. But it's, it's, it's hard to find, because I, as a moderator, I don't count as a department or a committee. So you have to like look for the town meeting section and then it's whatever. But, but I've also thought about getting, you know, like a westburrowmoderator.org or something domain and actually either repurposing it or just having pointers to the, to there. So that's another, and, and I guess I can redouble my efforts to maybe work with, with Westboro TV, you know... So that's another, and, and I guess I can redouble my efforts to maybe work with, with Westboro TV, you know, to, as the run ups, yeah.
It definitely is an intriguing project to look at, you know, that communication marketing piece and information, so.
It's really important.
Certainly our industry.
And I'll, and I'll use it as something to talk to my daughter about. My daughter, a proud Westboro High School graduate who's a PR and marketing manager now.
I'm just thinking every time we have an email going out to all of our families about something important in town meeting and we want them to come support the schools. And by the way, here's a link to, you know, top five things you need to know about town meeting or do you even know what town meeting is? And just, the more we can educate.
Right, right.
Yeah, I agree.
And again, you, you can do the advocacy, I can do the, here's how it all works and I, and I'm more than willing to do that, so.
There was an article, I don't know if you missed it because you were away in the Boston.
I have not read it in detail yet, but it was on the mass moderators link, the guy who's been moderator for 40 years.
Forty years on the front lines of New England's, New England's style of democracy reminded me of you. Yeah, so good.
Though I'll, I'll be long dead before I could be a moderator. I started late in the game to get 40 years in on this, but.
You would enjoy it.
Yeah, I have scanned it. I have not read it in detail yet.
I do think the only other piece that you and I have talked about a little bit is there's always this weird tap dance for the schools around whether or not we're gonna present.
Right, yeah.
And I think that we are a massive part of the town budget that was held up very prominently on the town side, that we are a gigantic portion of the expenditures. And people are supposed to make sense of whether or not they want to support our budget on very little information. It is our one opportunity to speak. I also then recognize keeping it tight and we have tightened it down so that it's succinct and clear enough that I think. We should present. I believe that before that people vote. But I also respect that you've always handled it well and it's all worked out. It just was a little confusing this year.
Yeah, this year, yeah, this year it got more confusing because I didn't know there were other people who had presented presentations. So actually as I was driving here, the one thing I thought about and, you know, we don't have to wrestle it to the ground tonight, but one thing. Try to remind me before the next town meeting to work out a, a, at what point do you think, because I do think, I mean, obviously with, you know, the millions and millions of dollars. We give the finance committee a few minutes, we give Jim a few minutes with the state, say, of the, say, state of the town or whatever. I've always thought that's really not the best place because there's time that passes between that and the vote. And then when the vote comes, it's like, well, do people question it or not? But I think we've gotten in the tradition now that pretty much somebody questions it every year. So maybe, maybe what we could set aside is just remind, you know, reminder that as the run up to the either. Any big articles in the fall town meeting or next annual town meeting for us to just talk about the, what, what's the preference in terms of, of. How to acknowledge to the voters knowing that you have a presentation. And as always, you know, the, the way I tell everyone is let's keep it 10 minutes and then, but have backup slides and if a particular topic keeps coming back and back and back, I'll let people go again. But I think everybody would rather see 10 minutes and then say, oh, we really need to know more detail about blah. And then focus a few extra minutes on that rather than trying to guess what blah, blah, blah should be.
I totally agree. And I think we've streamlined that and I would be very committed to presenting it the way that we need to. But I, I think that would be a piece for us to iron out.
Right, yeah. Yeah, so let's just make a note that we can touch base so, so I can inform the voters of how, you know, to expect a presentation. And then to make it that we're, that we know when it's gonna happen and how it's gonna happen. Because yes, that was, that was the only thing that was on, well, maybe not the only thing because I don't remember, but. It was, it was the main source of me having to make a decision on the fly and then, I mean, it all worked out okay, but.
It did work out because you managed it.
But it could have been a little smoother in terms of having known ahead of time how that was gonna play out, so.
All worked out.
It did. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? We appreciate your time.
All right, if you ever have any questions, let me know. And if, if you, if any school group or anyone wants, wants to hear me or get a pointer to somebody who wants to hear a discussion about town meeting and how it, how it works, how we got here and all that, just let me know.
We should definitely look at where to push that in as a, as a presentation of the curriculum.
Nice to meet you. I think, I don't think I've met you before. Nice to meet you Kristen. I think everybody else here I know.
Thank you so much. Welcome home.
Thanks for your time, yeah, thank you.
All right, next we have our program review update, health and wellness. We have Mr. Anderson, Coach Anderson.
Good evening Roger.
How are you?
Very good.
Was that a new W I already saw on your laptop over there? Not yet. I saw the W. Not yet. I see a lot of W's here though. It's kind of impressive to look at. It's like the one time I'm not wearing a W is to come up here. I haven't got it on my blazer yet, but I'm sure I will.
We got the first newly minted W here.
I think you're gonna show up with an old W. Congratulations on your award.
Thank you very much.
Yes, congratulations.
Coach of the year volleyball, MIAA.
Yes, state champ.
Kids, kids make it doable. So, we have great kids. So I appreciate, I, I saw a big block of time. I don't think we're gonna need quite that much time. But I, hopefully I can share with you some of the thing. We started our program review three years ago. And typically it would be a two-year process, but we wanted to catch up. We didn't have, we had work we still hadn't finished, so. I'm gonna show you not only what happened as a result of the program review, but what we've been doing since and how we're moving forward as a department. Because I'm really excited about where our department is going. What do I need to do with this to make it move? Let me make sure it's turned on. No. There we go, just the on switch. That was my bad. I could have gone there. Try it now, there we go. Very good. So, just a quick program review update, starting there. As you know, we've got new courses for Westboro High School. They're gonna be running next fall, a completely new program for grades 10 to 12. I'll talk about that in a little bit, but that was a major piece of our program review. When we looked back at what we were doing, grades nine to 12 were not current. They were not comprehensive and they were not aligned with the national standards that are, that are out there and. We really felt like we needed student choice and we wanted to move forward with that. So, that's happening and we're really excited about it. The kids have made their choices. We're in the process of figuring out how we're gonna schedule all that, but it really is a new dynamic for us and it, it's really exciting. Another high point is, is to make sure at all grade levels we're aligned with the national standards. Unfortunately, in Massachusetts, the, the frameworks keep running into roadblocks. 1996 was the last time the Massachusetts frameworks for health and wellness and physical education were written. They're very dated. The national standards, on the other hand, are pretty good and we've talked about that as a group before. So we've aligned ourselves there and we're really feeling good about moving forward with that. A number of our staff went out on site visits because we want to make sure that the other communities that had really cutting edge programs, great delivery. That, that we kind of went out and took the best parts of what they did and, and Westboro-ize it a little bit, you know, kind of cater it to the needs of our students and the strengths of our staff. And we're in the process of finishing that up. All of our curriculum documents are online. The, the new high school course ones aren't yet because they aren't finished. Because we've been in the process of this whole year really developing that new program. We're gonna finish that up over the summer so that everything rolls out. So, by the end of August, those curriculum documents will be up as well, but every other grade, they're all up there. And our website is, is up and available and I believe in this, in this presentation, there's a couple of links to it that you guys can follow as well, but. It's nice not just for you, but for the community. And when we had our kids sign up for courses, we just sent them directly to the website. And they could go home, they could check with their parents, they could look at it and it was a nice piece of technology integration. I will say that this picture is kind of neat. That's actually Westboro Public Schools faculty. On our professional development day being, going through some yoga, being led by one of our staff members, Catherine Caruso. She's one of our new high school teachers. And she's brought a really nice background that's different necessarily than you might think of a typical gym teacher of the past. Where she brings in a lot of wellness and yoga and dance and so having her there has allowed us to, to build and develop some courses we're really excited about. But she also did a great job lowering the stress level of our faculty on that day. So, along with the program review, we're gaining on, we're in year two of our strategic plan of three years. It mirrors and follows the strategic plan of the district and ties into that. I wanted you guys to know that we have completed a number of parts. There's some that are very near to completion and then there's some that, you know, are gonna be ongoing tasks for us. So one of the things we really looked at was our professional develop, professional development wasn't quite meeting the needs of all of our staff. A typical reading or writing professional development doesn't always match up with what we do. So we've worked really hard to get our staff to do different things. We got almost our entire staff to the state conference this past fall with great support. To be able to cover subs for those days. We also are building in collaboration. So the new Monday PD schedule has been really great for us because it's allowed us some consistency. To be able to get our K to six staff together or, you know, Mill Pond and Gibbons and have some vertical articulation at a more regular basis. So that's been really good and, and our staff is, is really enjoying that opportunity. And it's really nice because it allows, for example, at the three K to three schools, we make sure that by the end of third grade, all those students are entering Mill Pond on, on an even playing field. And with a fair background of the different skills that we have. Adaptive and alternative PE, so. One of the other things we identified in our strategic plan was that we really needed to meet the needs of all students. And we were doing okay with that, but now we're doing it even better. There are students who can't access our curriculum regularly for various reasons. It may be a social emotional thing, it may be a physical thing. And so we've met this year a number of times with special education coordinators. We've gone out and looked at best practices in other schools. There's actually, believe it or not, a unified physical education curriculum out there. So unified sports is the combination of, of regular ed kids and special ed students. There's unified PE and so this year we've been running a model with our adaptive students at Westboro High School where there are regular ed students in. Lot of positive peer modeling, really positive environment. And so now we're taking this unified phys ed model and applying it next year. So, that's in place and we're really excited about that because now every single student, we feel like is really getting the most beneficial opportunity they can in the least restrictive environment. The differentiation has occurred. Students at the high school chose their courses. The way we set that up is we had them choose six different courses. We have 19 that were available to them in grades 10 through 12. So there were themes of things like fitness, team sports and games, individual activities, movement based activities. And then we had a series of classroom ones with things like sports psychology, advanced nutrition and health myths. And then, uh, current health topics. So, we really tried to diversify and think about when, when our students get to be 15, 16, 17 years old, they have a pretty good idea. Of how they're gonna maintain their fitness and how can we embed the skills that allow them to do so. And that's what we really targeted. Our, as I said, our PE website is up to date. There's resources. I think last time I was here, the question or the idea was brought up of, are there resources for parents and families? Around issues of wellness. We have a tab on our, our website there for that. Should I jump to that or I?
Sure.
I think we can do that.
Go to this one?
Yeah, the one on the left.
The one on the left.
If you can do that. So there's our website, you know, the, the tabs across the top include the curriculum maps that I mentioned to you earlier. A list of our faculty. We've got our Metro West survey data there that we spent a lot of time talking with you guys about in the fall and really followed up with in some of our decision making. The wellness resources tab, if you can just click on that, Daniel. We've put together just a series of different resources there that a parent could go to, questions about, you know, what, what's going on. There's a variety of links that flow out of each of those and we vetted each of those to make sure that, you know, we felt like they matched up with the things that, that we felt were both. Valid and reliable about student wellness, so. And then the last piece there, you can jump to it, is our, our wellness curriculum and, and we're very, very excited about that. Our freshmen will come in and continue to get a full semester of health and a full semester of general PE. Kind of expose them to all the different things that we have at the high school. And then for 10, 11 and 12, you can see, we, we've just got that broad variety. I haven't spoken to you guys directly about it, but I know it's been mentioned and certainly if you have questions about that, I'd, I'd be happy to entertain them. But I want to go take, I want to go take all these courses myself. And I think what it really does is it allows us to really reach, you know, every possible student that we can. Whereas our, our current setup really doesn't do that. And so that, we, we came to that idea through the program review, put in a strategic plan. And now we're really moving forward with it, you know, cutting edge stuff that's gonna really, it's gonna be really exciting. It's gonna be really exciting, so. Thank you for checking that out in all your free time. If you want to jump me back to the presentation, that'd be awesome. So those are the things that we've completed. We're really close to completion.
That was me.
That's okay. We're bored jumping on top of each other here. Our curriculum documents are in the process of being revised. We're in the middle of, of our two-year goals with all of our teachers. So at the K to eight level, our curriculum documents are being revised with, with completion next year, but in reality, those are living documents. As we, you know, come to new information, as our new Metro West survey, which we're gonna be administering next fall, gives us new data. We're constantly changing what we do to meet the needs of the students. So again, as I mentioned, the, the high school curriculum, which we just got a peek at. We've been working hard as well with a subcommittee on our fitness delivery. Because I think a number of years ago, it was actually World War II, that, you know, just after that, President Kennedy identified that we were not a particularly fit nation. And so, out of the military grew physical education. Nowadays, we are finding that our kids are better served if we really individualize fitness. So, if we say, for example, you know, everybody's gotta go out and run a mile and, and you need to run it by seven minutes. Maybe for Sarah, it's a piece of cake, okay? But maybe for me, seven minutes is really hard work, okay? That isn't an equitable system and it doesn't key into what we want for kids around fitness, which is effort. We want them to go out and work on their own fitness so that they can live a healthy and active life. That's really at the core of our whole department. So now we're really keying in on them identifying things and looking at all the different components of fitness. And then taking them from where they are and moving them forward. That's our bottom line on it. So while we still identify healthy ranges for weight and things like that, we really are taking kids and having them identify them where they are and then moving forward. And a great example of that is some work that we've, we've just begun at Mill Pond. And Mill Pond, every student has an iPad, which is really cool. And so, a few weeks ago, all the students brought their iPads to phys ed. They were going through different fitness exercises like planks or inverted pull-ups. And they would take the iPad out and videotape each other and then take a look at it together. And, you know, when a kid thinks they're in a perfect plank and their body is sort of like this or sagging down, they don't always have the, the kinesthetic awareness to know that. So, the, the iPad is great. And then what we're building in is, we're gonna do that at the beginning of the year. And they're gonna reflect and set some goals and then come back to it at the end of the year and they're gonna videotape themselves again. So we're gonna have a really nice log of how that student is moving. We can look at them moving in different ways as well. We can, they can keep track of some of the times on the different things that they do. And what the teachers are finding there is that, that they're getting a great effort out of everybody. Whereas if we said, here's the standard you gotta hit, if the student was, you know, naturally gifted per se, they really weren't trying that hard. And that's not gonna lead to a life of great fitness. We know to stay fit, you gotta work at it. There's just no getting around that. So we're building that in and, and we're looking at every level K to 12, how can we do that? And so that's in process and we're getting close to it. We've got a meeting on May 11th that the fitness subcommittee is gonna report back out to our staff and we're gonna look at how we're gonna implement those ideas. As I said, the technology integration is, is coming along. We've got Bluetooth music in every gym and which that really allows us to, you know, motivation can come from music. It's great for us. We've got projectors where we need them. So we're really close to having all of that there, ready to go. And then we're always working on scheduling, but particularly at the high school, we just felt like we could do better. So all the new courses are a quarter in length. And rather than having them do six days of this or two days of that or five days of that, if you sign up for the net sports course, you're getting net sports for 30 days. And you're really gonna look at what it is that allows you to be successful at. What are the connections between pickleball, badminton and tennis? What's similar, what's different and how can you apply that knowledge? And so that'll make them better consumers. We're also, as a part of everything we do, we're looking to connect with our community. So, where can I play pickleball? Where can I play tennis? What's available in our community and surrounding communities so that when they go, if, let's say they graduate and they move to a new community. They know how to access those things, which is really important, really important. By the way, please feel free to stop me and ask a question at any point.
I have a quick question.
Please.
You were talking about the, the elective process.
Correct.
How does the health curriculum flow through it and will there be a document with those?
Great point. So, embedded in each of the 10, 11 and 12 currently is a, is a, is a unit, a two units, 10 to 12 days of wellness that's, that's grade specific and age specific. When we pile them all together now in groups of 10 to 12 and let them choose where they're going, it's gonna look a little different. So what we're building is three one-year deliveries so that as they go through the high school, they're gonna get it all. But the way we assess them, for example, so in one year, we'll have an interpersonal communication and a decision-making unit that they will follow. The way that they will demonstrate success on that for us is with prompts at the end. And those will be grade specific. So yes, that was one of our biggies when we brought in a consultant named Joyce Tolkien, who's a great physical education consultant. Daniel helped us get her in. She said, what's really important to you guys? And we said, we got to keep the wellness in grades ten to twelve. That is reflected in some of the documents, but our new documents are going to look different than that, and they're not up yet. So that will come. Absolutely, it's going to be right up on the website. But we're wrestling with that right now as to how we're going to do that, you know? So for a senior, a decision-making prompt might look like something where they're at their college and they need to go to the library and it's ten PM. How are you going to do that? Talk us through that. So there's a decision there that's really related to a senior being off on their own. Whereas for a sophomore, it might be something like, you just got your new car, it's ten at night, and your friend called and asked you to pick them up. And yet the law says you're a brand-new driver, and you're not to do that. What are you going to do? And so each of the health skills are going to be applied in an age-specific way when we assess them.
And along those lines, if someone decides to take a full year and then none another year?
Right.
Is there a way to grapple with that?
That's challenging. That, we do keep track. I have a document that's phys ed double and deferrals all the way through. So if they are doubling up, we will know, the document says, are you doubling up for your sophomore and junior year, your junior and senior year? So when they go to wellness, in the first, say they do it first semester, they'll get one, and second semester, they would get the other. We keep, we do keep track of that. And that's a pretty small percentage of students, but it's an important piece because it allows our students to follow their passions in other ways, whereas if we absolutely lock down, there is no one who can do that, it really limits some of their electives. So yes, we do keep track of that. This is what I spend all day thinking about. It's great. I'm really glad you asked that question. So work's in progress. We're very excited. We were really close to moving forward with having a high adventure course put in over this summer, but when we looked at our brand-new course offerings, that was going to be a lot of work. And we also have a brand-new outdoor turf and track coming in, and we felt like it probably was a really smart thing to wait one more year. So in the fall of two thousand nineteen, we're going to put in, or actually, prior to that, we're going to unveil in the fall of two thousand nineteen, a new ropes course up on our fields. And we're going to kind of wait a little bit to see exactly how the turf project footprint affects our area up there. But we worked with a really good group out of Vermont called High Five Adventure, and they came in and really set up some great potential opportunities for us and created a vision along with us. They met, three of them traveled down, met with us for half a day, then they went up and walked our property with us and looked at what can make a really great experience. And I think a lot of people remember the wow stuff, you know, you got on the zip line and it went really fast. Those are neat pinnacle experiences, but our course is really designed for kids to access in their four years of education and really learn some different skills while they're doing that. There's a lot of research around adventure skills. Number one, reaching kids who typical other sport and active modalities don't reach. And I personally had experienced that way. But also that leadership development, and we're hoping that we can open up our resources to the community and perhaps do some leadership work and some, you know, kind of getaway and get to an adventure course type of things for different community opportunities. But really, the heart of it is for our students, and it's progressive, it's developmental. Everything you see up there has multiple uses. The one on the bottom is neat. It's called a holy cow swing. I just love the name. Of course, it comes out of Vermont, and it's got cow. But what that would be, and the place we've envisioned it, is you look at our top turf field, and if you're looking at the field from our lower field, there's this big, huge retaining wall. And at the top-left portion of that, we have a small pole that runs the zip line the other way right now, which is defunct. But if you go stand up there, it's probably the best view around, looking out over Westboro. You can see all the different churches, you can see the whole place, you can see the water tower over in Marlborough, and right up at the top of that is where we're going to put the holy cow swing. And with the holy cow swing is two posts and a big post in the back, and people, you get hooked in on belay, and they pull you back, and they let you go. And you swing out, and you're actually going to swing out over that field, basically, and have this big lookout. And so that's the wow one, but the whole rest of the course is really based on building up and developing, and you got to have the wow at the end. Everybody loves that. I think Daniel's going to be the first one to go. Although I do have to say that I believe both of you have volunteered for an opportunity at Gibbons.
I did it today.
Did you do it today? So at Gibbons, we got a new adventure element called a flying squirrel. And if you want to see what it looks like, go to Instagram and look up Gibbons Athletics and PE.
You'll find me.
And you can see Jack Foley and Pat Nash go up. And what that is, is there's two pulleys and then a long rope, and then one person is attached here, and there's ten people pulling.
It was really fun.
And when those people go, this person just flies up in the air and swings. And the really neat part about that one is, that element is accessible to anybody, whether it's physical limitations, social, emotional, it's really cool. And so I'm thrilled to hear, Amber. I did not hear that you were taking advantage of that.
I'm up on Friday. I wanted to first make sure it worked.
And Daniel will be next.
Jack videotaped it really slowly.
In slow motion.
It's in slow, it's four minutes of like my takeoff. It's hilarious.
But it's really neat, and the kids love it because it's a whole group working together to give somebody a great experience. And that's part of why we like it, and we've brought in students of all sorts of different backgrounds, and it's really super cool. So that, I'm glad to hear that you took advantage of that.
Question, though.
Yes.
Are you using any of the old defunct adventure courses?
Yes. So part of the expensive adventure course is the poles. They're really expensive, and all of our poles are in great shape. So when they came in, they looked at that, and moving a few and reusing those has been, will add up to a significant cost savings for us. So yes. And the new tower that they've designed, which is way beyond what ours is, actually uses our existing structure there. So that's a huge, huge plus. And allowed them to really make it, you know, a really impressive course that they designed for us. Health and wellness delivery is still a work-in-process for us, grades K to twelve. We're really looking at Mill Pond. When they changed the schedule, we really wanted to find a way to get more health into Mill Pond, and we were not as successful at that as we want. I think with some change in leadership there, it may be another opportunity to relook at that. But we would really like there to be significantly more health delivery at Mill Pond, because as we know, our kids now are facing challenges a little bit earlier time than we did. They're facing opportunities at an earlier time than we did. They're exposed to things via technology far earlier than we were. And so we want to make sure that we're doing that. We're doing it in a comprehensive manner at K to six. It's considered comprehensive because, you know, some guidance counselors own a piece, and we own a piece, and the classroom teacher owns a piece. But we're constantly looking at models that we can ramp that up with. So that, just know that that's a work-in-process. We've met with the administration a number of times, our teachers have some ideas, and we're chipping away at that. I don't have a concrete solution that I can share with you now, but know that it's at the front of our radar for something that we think is really important. And then the other piece that's clearly a work-in-process is, we're really leaning on our own staff to develop each other. We've got a really neat staff now. We've had quite a bit of turnover in the past ten years, past few years, and we've got some really strong people. We had some strong people that we continue to lean on, but our new staff. And so we're going to begin next year to kind of teach the teacher model where we're presenting and working with each other as part of our professional development. So that's a work-in-process. Ongoing efforts that are continuous, that we're never going to say we're really done with, are our community connections. We brought in a number of different community wellness professionals on our Professional Development Day. We are making connections with our kids. Part of our course design is to have the kids go through experiences where they've got to connect with the community next year. So if they're in a team sport class, they're going to have to look for team sport opportunities for themselves out in the community, whether that's going to teamwork, figuring out how to get in touch with the rec department, looking at different opportunities at different places around town or in neighboring communities. Same thing with fitness. There's a whole lot of fitness and wellness resources right in Westboro that our students already access, but we want to make sure that they know how to do that on their own, because they are going to leave, and we feel they should be prepared to do so. We want to continue to be leaders in the community, both of our schools and the town around wellness. The Westboro Connects, or Community Connections, rather, is going to be an opportunity. We've got a night coming up on the fourteenth.
You were right the first time, Westboro Connects.
Westboro Connects, sorry. That I will, you know, I'll be presenting some information there, and the rest of our staff is reaching out in different ways to kind of provide opportunities for the community. We want to continue to integrate technology. There's some neat technology now around heart rate monitors that we're investigating so that, you know, a kid can come in and if they're in period two, they just pick up the heart rate monitor. There's not a strap anymore that has to be cleaned four hundred times a day, it's just a watch, and you can just take a little wipe and hit that. But the way the programs are now, when the kid picks it up for period two, it knows who that kid is, because of the time of day, and, you know, number one is Roger Anderson, number two is Kristen Dixon. So, and it tracks their data and it provides us with data. So we're looking at ways to bring that in. I think our middle school is probably the place we would start with that, because that really takes off the plate a teacher's judgment of effort. Your heart rate doesn't lie. It's pretty reliable, pretty predictable, especially when we get to know what your range is. You know, my range might be a little different than yours, but over, if we do a series of activities, we're going to find out exactly what your range is. And then we can ask you, what percentage of the forty minutes you were changed in class were you in your target heart rate zone? What a powerful question and concept for kids to be understanding. So we're looking at technology that way. And then we want to continue to use data to drive our instruction, drive our decision-making, and continue our partnership with the Metro West Healthcare Alliance. I did want to share with you guys some data that we recently got.
That might be me here. Go ahead.
I think I turned myself off over here. Okay, good. About some of our data from the two thousand sixteen Metro West survey. So the Metro West survey people are wonderful in that they will look at any subgroup, they will look at cross-tabbing, they will create things for us. They created this for us, and they created one for everybody because a lot of the wellness coordinators were asking about this particular subset, LGBTQ youth. So there's some surprising things in there and some not surprising things. One of the ones that might be surprising is that ten percent of Westboro High School identified in this subgroup. So that's almost a hundred kids. That's, if it's ten percent, it's right at a hundred kids. And, you know, there's questioning is a part of that subgroup, and that makes up a significant portion of it. But this particular subgroup really faces a lot of challenges, and we know this. We're aware of this at the high school, the CSS program that's there, our guidance and support staff, our school counseling services. But things where, you know, miss school, cyberbullied, dealing with, you know, depression, self-injury, the percentages are significantly higher than those that are, you know, heterosexual and cisgender, meaning that they choose one gender. There are a lot of categories that may or may not, you may or may not know, and may or may not be common knowledge, of kids who are transitioning gender, kids who are choosing not to identify with a particular gender, questioning their ideas about that. We don't encourage, per se, kids to be jumping onto any bandwagon, but we simply support kids in their journey to discover who they are across all, everything we do in the schools, whether it's in English where they're looking at their identity, or social studies as they're looking at their, where do they fit into a community? And this is a little bit introspective. However, we need to make sure that we provide our teachers with skills for a significant subset of our students to be able to help them out. So some of the things that are going on in our May faculty meeting, we've got a couple people coming in, Jeff Perotti, who is out of Harvard. He's an advocate for LGBTQ students. He's going to come in and kind of present to our staff about what are some of the challenges that these students face, and how can we create an environment where they can not just survive, but thrive as a part of our community? And I will go on record, and I always have, that the Westboro Public Schools are an extraordinarily accepting place, no matter who you are. When I first got here, I was really surprised that if you were in the band, you could also be on the football team. And, you know, you would see a kid literally run off the field with shoulder pads and pull the drum over their shoulders, and they'd be doing the halftime show. And, you know, people are accepted for who they are regardless of, you know, what they believe about themselves, or their, you know, religion, or their, you know, nationality, or their skin color, or anything else. I find it to be an amazing place for that. And we have some lessons in wellness about multiculturalism and about acceptance of others. But I did want to share with you this and inform you, let you know that, you know, as a school system, the wellness of all students matters, and that our department is moving forward with that. As I've mentioned to you in the past, the entire phys ed department, well, actually ninety percent of it, phys ed, health, and wellness are getting trained in DBT, dialectical behavioral therapy training, for schools. It's not, you know, it's not a counseling piece for us, it's for schools. We're actually, tomorrow is the fourth day of that training, and the second half of tomorrow is saying, okay, now that we've got this, how are we going to apply this? And how are we going to, you know, organize this, K to twelve, so that students get a consistent experience? They have language around things like interpersonal communication and self-management and how they do that, interpersonal effectiveness. So I just felt like it was important for you to know that we are partnering, continuing to partner with data. We're using our data to create support. Brian Callahan has been great at the high school to bring in Jeff. And another, he just sent me a text about that there's another guy coming in as well, and I want, and Jason Wheeler from the Safe Schools Program from DESE. One of those two will be there on our May fourth faculty meeting. And that just is continued support. I think, you know, we are a little higher on kids feeling part of their school than even the Metro West average. So that's pretty good, because the Metro West is pretty strong. We have had some changes in our staffing. As you know, we shifted some things around, put people in places where they can be really successful, and our new high school team is knocking it out of the park. We're really excited about that. The teachers that we've moved to different places and the ones that stayed are really bringing the curriculum to life. And our new staff, you know, when we hired four teachers last year because of retirements and changes and moves, we really built a team that had a broad, diverse skill set that could deliver on this new high school curriculum. We're really excited about that. Because of some increased enrollment and the changes in school start time and the new curriculum, we're going to add a little bit more staff this year. So we're going to be continuing to look for what's the best piece that's going to allow us to deliver our program in the best way.
You had that in budget, by the way.
That was in there. And then, you know, we're going to continue to push forward and make sure that, you know, as great as our staff is, we're going to continue to develop them and develop ourselves. The DBT training, the preparation through PD, we're taking, they're out taking courses. You know, Daniel has sent out a number of summer courses, and I know my staff has already signed up for a bunch of those. And we're leading the way. If any of you, I know Amber was up early this morning. Every Wednesday morning at six twenty at the high school, two of our high school teachers, Kevin Gill and Carolyn Chanley, offer what they call Wake Up Westboro. And it's for teachers and students and even community members, and they come in and they give a pretty high-intensity workout at six twenty in the morning before school and let you start your day off on a great note. We had a PD day recently that the second half of was targeted around wellness, and our staff delivered a great, great stuff around functional fitness and pickleball and transformational truths. And so I really feel good that our staff is not only, you know, just teaching kids about wellness, but delivering that in a variety of ways and really living it. I think that's really important, that we are models for that as well. So I think with that, I will open it up to questions. I'm excited that you gave me the opportunity to come by and share a little bit about how we're moving forward.
Well, it's nice because you let them talk along the way, so I feel.
Yeah, no, I appreciate you guys jumping in at timely points.
Wanted to mention something. I was at the State House today, and for school committee members, we're meeting on the Hill, and one of the bills that is up in the House is an act relative to healthy youth. And there was a group there called the Health, they were representing the Healthy Youth Act, and it's basically a push towards health education that has a consent-focused, LGBTQ-inclusive, medically accurate information. So I thought I would just pass on information to you.
I would be thrilled to see it.
I thought it was pretty, I thought it was very aligned with how far our, how, what I would actually call our health education is very current.
Comprehensive, yep.
It's very current. It's very current and modern. And as this woman was walking around, it was very clear that all the systems around me were not up to that space, but I thought our system really is.
Yeah, our teachers have presented in the past few years on what we're doing, you know, in our health particularly, and how it's skills based, and how we're, you know, use our data, you know, to inform that instruction.
I mean, one of the strengths is that you're constantly complimenting or looking at your surveys on a yearly basis and, you know, reorienting.
Yeah, we're so thankful that the Metro West has the grant that we're a part of that it continues to do that because it's just really powerful data.
So, one bit of feedback, I heard some reviews about the signing up for your electives.
Yes.
I have been a big fan of this. I've been, you know, praising this new program, but the way it rolled out, you may want to look at the process of signups. It seemed like the feedback was that they were given 10 minutes, pick six choices really fast, barely had time to read it, where they could make more thoughtful decisions in the future, just, you know.
Absolutely.
But definitely-
Absolutely. And part of that is that our current, our current portal for signups, Power School, is not yet ready to do what we need it to do. And we did give them a little more heads up than that. We did send them the information the day before, but they didn't look, and that's all right.
Right. It wasn't you.
There's no question about it. So, absolutely, that was our first run at that process. And unquestionably, we are not going to do it exactly the same way. And we're not done with that process either because we're running all sorts of different algorithms on how can we best get kids the courses they most want. So, I do appreciate the feedback on that, and it was not, we would not repeat it that way again.
And I also wanted to give you feedback that last year, when you came, and we looked at your website, and now looking at your website, it is incredible how far you have really come in terms of just giving up to date information that really gives solid, you know, a solid story and picture of what your department is really about. And in the past, it hadn't had that. So, it really is an extraordinary leap.
I appreciate the gentle nudge.
Really good, really good.
Thank you.
And with the new electives at the high school, do you have plans to collect student feedback along the way?
Yep.
To see how that's working?
Yeah, we're actually collecting feedback in our courses now, but that's definitely a part of it. We've done that, we've done that in both semesters this year. This year, second semester, we collected at the end of quarter three in the hopes that we could, you know, improve the experience just for quarter four. Even though this is the last time we're running the curriculum as it is, my staff came, you know, came together and said, we want to, we want to make sure that it's the best it can be right now, even though we're not going to repeat it. So, we are definitely going to take student feedback, we're probably going to reach out to the community as well and just see, you know, here was our first year, and what can we do better?
Yeah, and I imagine you'll get a lot of feedback on like, what were the hot topics and the popular, you know, picks and-
Well, it was kind of fun to watch kids sign up and see what they were choosing. But it was amazing that all of the courses had kids signing up for them.
Oh, yeah, it's just like you have something for everyone.
It was just really neat. Well, I hope so. I hope so.
Yeah.
You worked at it.
Oh, man. And we continue to. All right? Anything else?
No, thank you.
Thank you for the time and enjoy the night. I'll come back.
I just want to thank Roger for, I think, an example of, I think, our work around program review has really, with Daniel's work and the department head's work, we've really ramped up the focus and quality of our program review. We've gone deeper, and I think our recommendations are more crisp, and we're getting some really good work from these reviews. And for me, I think it's essential that you see that the strategic plan, the budget, and the implementation of our vision is working forward thoughtfully. We mapped it out, we held everybody accountable, we held each other accountable, and then the product is there to show you, like, live in the field, this is what kids are experiencing. So, I'm really pleased, Roger. I just want to say a real commendation to the work. Thank you very much.
We will continue.
And if you need, you know, feedback from us or support, when it comes to things like Mill Pond, you know, getting something in there, if you were to cross it, you know, past us at some point, you know, maybe we can support you in helping that.
I appreciate that very much, Lisa. Thanks.
Thanks, Roger.
Thank you, Roger. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
So, we are right on schedule, very happy. I do want to mention about the Project Adventure that you saw is very ambitious. It's a $100,000 project. We have not budgeted for it yet. We, one of the reasons that we looked at what would we do in staging it in pieces, Irene and I are looking at it, we're looking at, would we go after a fundraising chunk? Could we get a grant? You know, we're really looking at it, but I believe it's an important part of the renovation of that whole stadium, field, the high school experience of fitness. I think it's part of that big picture, and I think, you know, we'll get it, we're going to go after it because I think it's part of really strong programming. I also think it'd be amazing vision to be able to have the team be able to host corporate training. You have to be trained to run that stuff, and we have the staff to do it. Kevin Gill is our, like, Project Adventure guy, and so, you know, Jeff would be able to bring his police over, and they could work the project stuff, they could use the course, they could do leadership stuff.
Jessica, would you sign me up for it?
I know. We could put him on, what is it, the cat, what do we call it?
Bring him on the Holy Cow.
The Holy Cow swing, and he could swing his new people out over the field. So, I think being able to offer in Westboro, a part of it is like corporate leadership training outings would be really cool as a give back and then opportunity to do some neat stuff. So, I'm very excited with the direction of it. We just would have to come back and think about that money piece, so. Thank you, Roger. I know you need to get out of here, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is it Daniel?
So, Daniel, we're right on time here, actually a little ahead.
It's me. Okay, this is coming back and presenting a material we presented to you in its update on issues that I presented on last year. They were basically, were having to do with three subject areas, world language, math, and science. And math and science, all of these were in slightly different places. Science was in like the second year of, this year was the second year of implementation of a new science curriculum. World Languages was last year, their first year of sort of doing a review and coming up with a new vision. And math wasn't going through a formal review, but there were some tweaks that were going on in making math more accessible and less leveled at the middle school, high school level. So, I'm just going to give you a brief update on all three of these. Just to refresh your memory on the, what was going on for foreign language, world languages, is part of the impetus for wanting to change the approach to our delivery of world language has to do with the fact that it's kind of losing favor with our students in terms of their engagement with it. Enrollments were down once you sort of, at high school, fulfilled what was needed to get into a four-year college. Not many students, and this is not just in Westboro, this is national findings, you know, not very many students pursue AP courses in the world languages. And 75% don't continue taking world languages once they get into college. So, some of the reasons for the decline is that the students are mostly interested in using it for communicating with people from other cultures or people in our, you know, in the United States who speak a different language, and not so much wanting to learn to read novels and construct writing in the foreign language. And so, you could see, I mean, that makes intuitive sense, right? And so, the movement was, that's happening nationally, and I think it's slow in coming, but here in Westboro, there's, we're sort of in vanguard with a few other districts in the state and around the country of wanting to move towards this proficiency model that puts a lot more emphasis on speaking and listening, and less emphasis on the grammatical precision. And so, it involves, you know, having the kids getting up and interacting, and just the teachers talking in the target language, and the students having to, you know, actively participate and use the language. So, there's a link there to last year's report that I submitted to the committee, but I just wanted to tell you at this stage, you know, there are a couple of things that happened this year that are relevant is that we have new leaders in the, of the world language departments, both at the middle school and also at the high school. So, the leadership is very much on point for moving in this direction, but there was some adjustment with the new leadership in terms of, especially at the high school, where the leadership at the middle school, where faculty that were already on board and a part of the discussion, the leadership at the high school is somebody who's new to the district, who's fantastic.
Yeah, he's great.
He really is, Bobby Solomon.
He's wonderful.
And, you know, the faculty really like him a lot, but he had to take a step back to just, you know, he was feeling that the department at the high school wasn't quite ready to be moving for Level 3, 4, and 2, 3, 4, and that really we've got to focus on Level 1 and get the proficiency off the ground. So, this year, he slowed it down a little bit in order to, you know, be able to make sure that we were doing it properly. But all in all, you know, I think it's going in a great direction, that teachers are seeking out, going to conferences and seeking out professional development, and they spent this year, you know, talking and reviewing their curriculum, and there's going to be summer work that's going to go on, and so, that's the update.
I attended, I attended one of their meetings, and the dynamic difference, I think Bobby's goal to slow them down a little bit, get everybody on the same page, in reiterating to him where they were, it allowed them to clarify where they were and then take those next steps forward. And I think he's provided really dynamic leadership to start to create the kind of energy that we're looking for in that department to really head in a new direction. So, it's exciting.
So, any questions on that piece?
I have a question. Is, are we, is the department world language or foreign language?
It's world language, sorry.
Is that true at Gibbons as well?
It should be.
Could it be, please?
Yeah.
Is it not?
Could it be?
It could be. Are you, are you saying it currently says foreign language?
So, I went to the sixth to seventh grade transition.
And they talked about-
It was all about the foreign language.
Foreign language.
And when you sign up on Paris School, it's about the foreign language. And I kept saying under my breath, world, world language, just because it's a more modern term.
Sure, yeah, definitely.
Sure, sure. Good observation. My apologies.
No, it's just, it's just, again, like, a shift that can make a big difference.
Yes.
I agree. I agree.
Yeah. Agreed. Other?
I just want to comment, what a great focus, because that truly is, I think when I had French, it was conversational French. We didn't really pay too much attention to grammar, except when you had to.
Yeah.
Right.
And in fact, I still remember a fair amount of it.
Exactly.
And even the Italians can understand some of my French, so, you know, it worked.
I agree. Weston's, one of Weston's strengths was their proficiency model, language, and students' immense capacity to speak and understand and engage in the language was just always impressive to me. So, I have a benchmark for where I want us to be in two years. It's moving, so it's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Just a-
I was going to say, I imagine that that also prompts a change in instructional strategies for teachers.
Oh, absolutely.
Huge, it's huge. It's a whole different thing.
A whole retooling of everything, which to me, it's great.
Yes, it is. And one of the things in this picture illustrates is the technology has really changed, the need for a separate language lab has gone away, first of all. But second of all, you see the booms that they have, it's not just listening. When we were, we were just listening to language, and there was no way for us to practice it. And not only can they practice and submit audio files to their teachers, so teachers can collect, instead of written assignments, they can verbal assignments, which I think is wonderful. But there's also computer aided listening and interpretation feedback loops that can happen.
Right, telling them how you're doing. It's kind of cool.
Yeah, right. Like, corrects your pronunciation.
Yeah, it's exciting.
Yeah.
And soon enough, your TVs will all be on a different language so that your child can practice listening and hearing another language, their favorite movie and their favorite TV shows.
Yeah, I love it.
It's one of the assignments for a lot of us.
You know, that's quite interesting because-
World language teachers.
Yes.
My experience in Brazil was they really have a terrible school system. Basically, you know, you've got elite schools that people pay for, but the majority of the rest of the population learns foreign languages through television. And so, you've got, you know, whatever the language the movie is in, and then they've got the captions in some other language so that they can learn something. I was amazed because Brazilians are really, really sharp people.
Yeah.
Interesting. Okay, so, math, I want to just say, the update here is we were, for the first year this year, opening this new pathway for freshmen to take honors in ninth grade. And it always had been sort of a sticking point that, you know, there was, it was, you would go into, they could go into honors, but there was only, there was honors that was at the geometry level, and there was no algebra honors. And some kids weren't ready to go on, they needed more Algebra I training and experience because in eighth grade, not all kids are conceptually ready to handle the abstract thinking that's involved in Algebra I, but there, but there are levels of advancement. And so, parents and some kids were frustrated because they were really honors level students that then had to take a test during the summer to see if they could go up a level. And to avoid this sort of anxiety and test taking in the middle of the summer, the math department came up with a concept of putting in the ninth grade honors, Algebra I honors. And I think it worked very well. There was a few students who self-selected in, who ended up feeling over-challenged, and I think they either needed to step back or they felt like, you know, next year it'll be tweaked somewhat so that there's a little better process of signaling to parents and students that, you know, what they're getting into. But it, it basically, the last bullet here is part of the rationale for doing this was also making sure that there was this pathway to pre-calculus honors. And it's not that, you know, all of our students are not ever going to get to calculus, and nor should they, but there is a higher percentage that should be able to get to pre-calc. And pre-calc is as, it's not as, you know, considered as prestigious, but it's still very prestigious to get into pre-calc. And so, we were doing our students a disservice by having a whole group of students that were not able to get to pre-calc because of the way we had structured the curriculum. And so, I think that this is all positive, and it's working well.
It's been challenging. It challenged the staff to make the transition, it challenged them to figure out the different nuances of admittance and grading and pacing, and lots of important and appropriate challenges. I couldn't be happier with this. The track was a track, and it was too tight, and it was cutting off opportunity for kids. And I think I commend the department and Daniel and the principals for some really, really good quality intellectual conversation to come up with a right solution, shared between the middle school and the high school, to really come up with something that we really needed. And I think parents across the board end up feeling that this made a lot of sense. So, I'm very, very happy with the outcome of this program work.
Questions on the math piece?
Really pleased. I've heard good feedback, too.
Yeah.
Good.
From parents.
Good. And then, on the science, the, there was, this was the first year that all of our freshmen were to take the new natural science and engineering course that we put in place two years ago. And you may remember the, what the, the reason why it was the first year that all freshmen was, it used to be that going from, and this is a leveling issue again, is that students could go from eighth grade, when they went into high school, either into ninth grade or skip into like 10th grade biology, essentially. And there was sort of this kind of an elite structure that was created, and it was our perception that there really, the students weren't not being given any, there was no special advantage for them going in, and it just created unnecessary competition to try to get into that 10th grade level in ninth grade where they would benefit, and their trajectory in terms of science courses and their future in terms of college admissions would not be harmed at all by having them be part of the natural science and engineering theory into, into practice course.
And you rewrote that, I think the other pertinent piece of that is that they rewrote and redesigned that course because the reason kids were hopping over is because the freshman course was perceived as a repeat of-
Yes.
Things that had already been covered, and it wasn't rigorous enough, and it didn't really cover new territory. So, in completely innovating it and making it high level, and in having levels available for it, we unpacked, I think, a better science experience. I think the take on this is it's going to take us another two years to continue to get the good news out about that. People still feel like they've lost out. I think they still feel like their kids were cut off from something that was a more elite track. And so, we know- track, and so we know that feedback, we, we take it in, and I think we're going to weather it through and keep working, and, and we did hear that, you know, there's some feedback around the diversity of the range of how those courses are being, that they haven't standardized that grade course nine enough yet, so, we're looking at that feedback, but I'm, I'm happy with this change as well, I think again, it's thoughtful, well, these are not easy changes to push into high school structures, and I just want to commend the high school for demonstrating this amount of flexibility.
Yeah, and it's a phenomenally innovative course.
It really is.
And, and, and it is much more rigorous than what the ninth grade, and, and, um, it's also much more pertinent than what the ninth grade course used to be, because it's, 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 it is a, a true STEM engineering and science, and, that, that are, you know, the kids are, are using, um, data and tools and technology to look at, um, scientific, you know, outcomes and principles, and, and analyzing in a much more sort of conceptual, open-ended way, the material, rather than learning from a book.
It's a good course, and it's getting better, better and better, so it's exciting.
Yeah, so, that's that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Welcome.
Yeah, I mean, it does expose people who didn't know they were interested in physics at a much earlier stage, or engineering at an earlier stage.
Because the physics.
Yeah, as long as you don't call it that.
Well, no, that's exactly right, because they did the.
Because it's really just a physics engineering class, but that's STEM, that is what STEM
Well, right, because we used to have then those other, those other districts that were doing physics first, and there was this big physics first debate, which we hadn't entered into, so I think that what we came up with and what Daniel worked with the department to design is a real more innovative current course that's matching what, you know, Massachusetts wants to head towards, and provides, um, a process for students to really experience a broader range of science concepts, so I'm very pleased with it as well. All right.
That's.
Back to you.
So, so, our last, uh, agenda item, we have our annual security procedure update, we have our new, um, chief here, and our resource officer, Officer Daphyle, thank you for coming. So I think we're going to talk a little bit in, um, open session, and then if we feel that we'll go into executive session.
Yeah, we definitely break this presentation, and again, it's an annual opportunity for us to hear about the work that's going on, and, um, I think also really a, a huge commendation to the change in structure, that we now have a full-time, uh, resource officer. I want to begin by being on public record for thanking Jeff for really providing the opportunity for the resource officer to now be available to do work, and I think they'll probably talk a little bit about that, but we keep the security discussion very unspecific, and then in executive session, we have an opportunity, if you ask more specifics to the private process, that we feel like we don't really, um, hold that out there to be available, so, uh, welcome, uh, you guys up. We've talked several times today, officer.
All good stuff. First off, I want to thank you for having the opportunity to come in front of you, again, uh, it's a pleasure, I am open for, first of all, if I'm talking about anything, you have a quick question, please just shout it out, let me know, um, because I tend to actually almost talk too much, so please, feel free to just kind of interrupt. The first thing I want to address is that, with this year, the, the new challenges that we've been facing, the new events that have been taking place, um, I've met with Amber, we've decided to kind of go through all of our school protocols and policies and procedures that have to do with safety, um, I've been doing that, actually, since February, it's a process that does take a long time, it's something that you just can't do for one school, there's not a cookie cutter sheet that I can just apply to all schools, so I literally have to go through every school, go through every plan, um, I'm in the process of doing that now, with the principals and administration, of course, so, uh, that's step number one, I just wanted to let you know, it's something that's going on. Also, we are, had very successful drills this year with our intruder slash safety protocol drills, um, this year has been a spectacular year for that. Each year you try and do something a little bit more and a little bit different in the drill, and each principal has stepped up to the plate, done something a little bit different, made it a little bit more challenging for the staff, and that does help us, uh, makes it more real, makes it more, um, even more difficult for the staff to implement, but it does help us make it more realistic, the more realistic it is, the better you train, the more you train, it's how you react in a real emergency, and, uh, they're doing spectacular, especially the high school, I have to point out, uh, Matt LaFave and I worked very hard in developing a, uh, different plan this year for the high school to try and get the students more active, involved in the, uh, intruder protocol drill, um, that was done successfully this, uh, past couple weeks, um, I've had great feedback from the parents, great feedback from the students, and, um, little things that we did find out, we've tweaked and, uh, looking forward to doing something else in the near future.
Chief, you were able to experience that drill.
Yes.
And thought we did okay, we really want to make sure we performed well for our, our new chief, um, and a chance for you to see how the schools work, and the commitment we have to partnering, um, with the police.
Did a very good job. Also, Armstrong School is now doing their drill, they're going to have a drill May second, that's on the record, they already were telling us that they were doing that, that's going to be advertised, uh, no surprise there, but the time that they're doing it is going to be, um, still, still set to be determined. Mr. Mendy does a fantastic job, too, he's with military background, understanding the training's very important, and drills are very important, um, he always does add something a little extra, something different, to make sure the staff is aware, and has them do something a little extra. Also, uh, I'd be remiss in thanking everybody for the cameras, and the BDAs in the schools, with the experience I've had with the middle school, and how their camera, camera system has worked and helped us, I just had a situation last week, um, unfortunately, I had a minor incident in the bathroom, a boy's bathroom, and without the camera system, figuring out who goes in and out, there's no cameras pointed in the restrooms, of course, but just figuring out who's going in and out, that eliminates people that I need to talk to, so that does help tremendously. Mr. Foley and I discussed cameras before they were going in, and he was, he and I were saying, well, how do we use them, what, what do we need them for, and what, and now that we have them, we are amazed at how much it helps, um, it really does weed out a lot of time for the staff, weeds out a lot of time for myself, so it's appreciated from the town, it's a, I know it's a large bill, but it's really, really appreciated, and the BDAs along the same thing, um, they are in the middle school now, they help communications tremendously, um, I had a situation where I was calling out just actually, uh, yesterday, and it was just to check out, you know, like, hey, I'm at the middle school, well, that, I was in a place where I transmitted no problems, and it does really help a lot, and I'm looking forward to the high school, and having that, you know, implemented is going to be a very big bonus there.
Can I, can I just confirm this, so, I know at town meeting, we approved BDAs for Hastings as part of the renovation, and the high school as part of its own item along with the cameras, Gibbons already has it, does Mill Pond have a BDA?
No, they do not.
They do not?
Yeah, just a correction there, um, we, we will have a BDA in the new piece that we're building, we haven't yet, um, got the funding for the renovation of the rest of the school.
Is this in Hastings?
Yeah, at Hastings.
So it is just the new piece, so I, I wanted to be clear on that, because I know that, that a lot of people have really looked into that, and want to be able to support you, and want to be able to get to that point so that we get it, but I, I want to be clear in our message back as to where we're still lacking there.
Yep, no, absolutely.
And then obviously fails.
Yep.
Is a concrete block.
Yep.
Yeah, at this point, we, as you, as you know, we don't know what it, what it's going to be, what fails will be, whether it's a reno, or whether it's going to be demolished and, and built new, but within a year and a half, we'll know a lot more.
We'll know. And Armstrong has nothing yet, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
And, uh, the other piece that I just want to leave you with, an open session, uh, before I hand it over to the chief, um, is the fact that this is our first year, I have joined up with, uh, South Row and North Row, we're doing a youth academy, a youth police academy, that'll be held in West Row this year, it will be at Gibbons for the first time, um, South Row's been doing it for years, fifteen years, I've helped South Row several years with it, and it's a very successful program, um, they have a very high rate of return of students that want to come back every year, it'll be held for, uh, twelve-year-olds to fifteen-year-olds, and it will be in the summertime, it will be August thirtieth through, excuse me, scratch that, it'll be July thirtieth through August third, and looking forward to getting that off the ground, um, and actually, tomorrow, we're having a meeting with South Row, North Row, to discuss the details, but we already have our agenda, we already have a syllabus in place, and we're excited to get it kicked off the ground.
Yeah, let us know if you need any help with that.
Oh, very, very nice, yeah, yep, uh, actually, Gibbons and, and is already booked for that time, so we're very excited to get it done.
Is that through the rec department?
It's not through the rec department, we decided, we decided this year for our trial run, I didn't want to muck up any of their systems, so I, I did it independently, um, and with the three towns involved, I didn't know if that was something that.
They have to coordinate.
To coordinate.
Could you explain a little bit about how, how the facility at Gibbons would be used, and the only reason why I bring it up is that we are hopeful to do the foundations for the new canopy out front.
Right.
This summer, and so.
Yep.
There may be some in, interest there to see what's going on on your side.
Yep, it would just be the gymnasium area and two classrooms. During the day, we mainly would also be using the fields for nice weather, so hopefully it'll be nice weather, yeah.
Good.
So I'm excited about that, too, uh, it was very successful when we implemented in Nuxbridge, so I kind of wanted to hit the ball, get the ball going, uh, early on, so, a little bit about me, um, so, I've been in policing for a number of years now, um, also, when I was in Auburn, uh, I was involved with the school committee there, I was actually chair when we built the new middle school, so I feel your pain with your building project, uh, but it went very well, and that was through the open communication that ICU folks doing as well. What I bring to the table, in, to me, it was a, a no-brainer to put our school resource official, because he's attached to the detective bureau now, um, Monday through Friday, when school's in session, and we're taking that time, that off time in the summer months, to, again, to educate and mentor our kids, uh, with the youth academy, while collaborating and building relationships with North Row and South Row neighbors, and why I bring that up is, uh, over school vacation week, uh, we did hold active shooter training, um, at our middle school, uh, I brought in Semlek SWAT as instructors, we also invited North Row and South Row to train with them, in the event that we have an emergency, our neighbors are going to be coming to help us, and we're going to go and help them in times of crisis. Chief Purcell and I, um, approached Homeland Security, and we acquired, uh, forty-two thousand dollars, a grant, again, for active shooter. A lot of people don't realize that forty-six percent of these incidents are involved in our business community, uh, so we're going to be utilizing, uh, other, uh, entities for training, again, with South Row and North Row with our fire departments, uh, this is going to be real, uh, lifetime training, we're going to use seminitions, um, that's basically paintball, uh, type things, give me some realism, and, uh, it's going to go very well. The big thing with training, and, and the superintendent, you know, brought that up, it's good to make mistakes in training, to hopefully not repeat them, uh, when faced with a critical incident, so you're going to see, at least under my command, a real strong, uh, presence with the schools, and a very high emphasis on that connection, uh, you'll probably see more of our officers occasionally, uh, walk through the schools with our, our school resource, uh, official, um, because, A, I'd like them to get to know the staff, I'd like to get them, uh, to see the kids, uh, I had one of my officers, we were doing walkthroughs at the library, and I'm doing ride-alongs with our offices, and he said, you know, chief, I really, in the beginning, you know, going to the library and everything else, but yesterday I walked down, it was kids reading day, and they all lit up, I love going to the library now. So two things happen, it's good for the kids, it's good for our offices, but then again, if something terrible happens in our schools, now our offices have a geographical location to go to if there's an issue, so, there's a whole host of reasons why I think it's important for us to have a real strong collaborative working relationship. I think Chip's doing a fantastic job, he's got a lot on his plate, uh, but I see a lot of success coming in the future, and, and coming into my third month here, I can tell you, I'm very impressed with the staff, uh, other department heads, other, uh, worker, employees in town, elected officials, trying to work together to enhance the quality of life, uh, that we have here in town.
I agree, it's been very easy to work with Chief Laurie really early on, and we already text back and forth, it's always a good sign, we can like, reach each other quickly, um, and so, uh, I'm hopeful that we can lure the two of them in to do one of the wellness hot topics with Roger, so.
Look out.
It's a great opportunity, so. So we should probably, we could probably move towards, I think they've covered what they can cover in open session.
So, before we go into open session, I'd also like to thank Chief Laurie, because I think you immediately came in here, and I know one of your first things was, oh my gosh, I have to ask the town for more money to upgrade things, and, uh, so far, I, as a citizen, I'm very happy to see you make those decisions and help guide us in the right way, so, and, you know, obviously putting Officer Daphyle, or official Daphyle, however it would work now, um, on to Monday through Friday.
Detective Daphyle.
Detective, uh, is, is a great call, and support that, and I thank you for, for being willing to make changes in a system that is working to some degree well, but where we can improve.
And I appreciate that, and I ask you all to be patient with us, uh, we do have, we are limited in certain areas right now, and I'm going to do the best of my ability, uh, to try to enhance, uh, what we do, um, and when yes is yes, great, and when no is no, we're going to do the best with what we have, and, and, uh, I have a great staff, uh, it's a team effort, we're up for the challenge, and, um, it's a great department, it's just, there's always room for improvement, and I think, uh, we have a great team in place, and we're going to get that done.
I also commend your efforts for reaching out to the North Row, South Row, like our community partners, because they are the people that are going to respond to support you and, and back up the community when something happens, and we're going to do the same for them, and I think it's so important to be in each other's community, in each other's buildings, to figure all that out.
And it really is, the other benefit to that is, they're making contacts with one another, so now when we have cases that, tonight, you know, I was out with one of our officers doing a ride-along, and, you know, Upton was looking for assistance, so I mean, we're constantly, you know, helping each other, so it's important to, to, you know, meet each other and know, uh, that there are people out there that can help us, you know, when we need that help, and like, yeah, we are limited right now, um, you know, I don't like to scare people, but I did, uh, up the minimum manning, but we were running shifts with three officers, and that can be difficult when you have two booking a prisoner in South Row right now, because of our situation, uh, our, our office space, and then we have another officer who's filling details for two and a half, uh, you know, so, these are things that we need on neighbors right now.
I think you spoke yesterday, too, at Sleckman's meeting, because I, I, I mean, we, in our placement for a school committee, for our school department to be displaced, is really manageable, and the town put us in a space that is very workable for us, but because of the amount of specialized needs of the police department, being out of the police department is a huge, huge compromising, safety and, and performance issue for them, at a level at which I think is concerning to everyone, to get them back in there as much as possible, and you did speak about that last night.
Well, I wasn't recognized, so I'm going to hold that for the next meeting. But yeah, they, it's, it's a huge issue, I mean, the last thing I want to do as a police chief, or my supervisors, is to demotivate staff and say, hey, listen, summons, don't arrest when someone should be arrested, or, uh, but it is a tax on the agency, for instance, when we go to South Row to book our prisoners, they won't house female prisoners, so then we have to go to Hoppington. Hoppington, we can't bail from Hoppington, because they're middle six districts, we have to go pick up the prisoner, bring her back to North Row to, to bail, I mean, it's ours, it's, it's, we're sending a message, so when we talk about, you know, these people in town, and I, I know they, listen, everyone has a reason for what they, what they do, but we really need to make sure that this project isn't delayed, and I'm not saying this on, to, to badmouth the Spur House, uh, in any way, that they want aesthetically make that look more pleasing for a bid, or to the town manager who's trying to save probably a couple hundred, three hundred thousand dollars because of rent and different things, project, uh, I'm saying from public stand, safety standpoint, that we need to be back in a police station, uh, for secure facility, I mean, we're in an office park, we lose power, we're shut down, we were shut down for twelve hours, I mean, I had to go up to my cruiser to get my flashlight, just to get to my locker, um, so these are, these are issues that we have to face, that I don't think the public realizes, we can't bring prisoners there, we can't bring suspects there, you know, to, to interview, um, it's an office building, you know, I mean, would you, if it was your op, place of business, would you like to see us, you know, bringing in, you know, you know, it's just not conducive to what we do.
I just want to make sure we let you know that we support the need as well, I, I know that, that the school district, um, we, we've managed being in our space well, and, so we all want to be back downtown, though, so it'll be a really good thing to see.
It'd be great, we'll be neighbors.
I know, I'm excited.
Well, just to speak to, to it, I'm chairman of the Spur House, um, committee, and our interest is to work with everybody to get where we need to go. You know, our purpose so far has been simply to gather information and understand what the parameters are in terms of the process, town meeting has now spoken twice on the sale of the Spur House, I think it's pretty clear that the majority vote, uh, twice now, has said, this is what the town wants, so, uh, you know, as a member of the committee, our purpose is simply to get there, get it done, uh, to do it in a way that makes sense for to do it in a way that makes sense for everybody. And there is absolutely no reason in my mind, having worked on, not only as a professional engineer and constructor, why the things that we're talking about can't be done in a short period of time. It's just not logical, the answers that we've heard so far.
Yeah, that's above my pay grade. It just says the police chief, and like I said, they're great folks on that committee and great folks that work in town. From my standpoint, it's just, I need to have a facility that's conducive to policing. And what we're in now, I mean, we're talking next May now. And if it's, and if these people that are giving this information, if they're correct and they're saying it could be six, seven, eight months out, I mean, we really need to get going on this. And I say that to you just as the police chief. I respect people that are on the committee and people that are in town making decisions. But as the chief, we need to get out of that office space as soon as possible.
I certainly understand that and certainly understand your need. Ultimately, the decision for whatever is going to happen is going to be made by the board of select.
And we're going to do the best we can with what we have, believe me. I've got a great group.
Yeah, I understand. And in fact, there isn't any animosity here other than just getting the facts on the table and reacting to it and doing the best we can.
I agree.
So...
Well, we gave you public record time and I recognized you to make sure you had an opportunity to speak. So, we're glad to have it on record that we all want to be back at Forbes as soon as quickly can be done.
So, I'm going to make a motion to move into, to vote to meet an executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation and under MGL Chapter 30A, Section 22G2, for Purpose 7, to review and approve executive session minutes.
Second.
On favor, Wilco? Edinburgh, yes, do that, yes?
Crandall, yes.
Dorrit, yes.
Thank you.
We just need a couple of minutes, right?
You guys can sit down and swirl in the big chairs.
Yeah, come and swirl big chairs.